Okay.
He's here.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for being here for our work session for today, March 3rd. The first item on our agenda is the early notification text amendment follow-up. So if we could have at the table Allison Parks from the City Attorney's Office, John Anderson, Planning Manager, and Nick Norris, Planning Director.
And unfortunately, we're missing Nick Tarbit today, so...
I know.
He's not here to do an introduction, so would you rather just have me start?
You go for it.
All right, let's go for it. So at our last meeting, we mentioned the staff intended on working with some of the language with the Attorney's Office and the City Council staff, just to propose some really, really minor changes to the ordinance to help provide some clarity and consistency in the ordinance. We did meet and we, I think we found some appropriate language there, and that should be in your packet. I'll go through those items really quickly, and then if we have any questions, we can discuss them specifically. The first one talks about a change that just says the property owners and tenants will be contacted using the best available information from the city's GIS system. I think last time we mentioned, you know, this is not a perfect system. Occasionally, some people do get missed because the system hasn't updated, or there's missing renter information that's not included in the system. We are working with IMS and the County Assessor's Office to improve that system, but it's always going to be imperfect, but it's a system that we have in place. But that's why we're also proposing to place signs in the front yard of every project at that early engagement time, so to at least attempt to catch the knife somebody if you're not getting a notice in the mail. The second change was to clarify when an outreach event will be held in lieu of a recognized community organization meeting. We just wanted to make it really, really clear that it was one instead of the other, rather than holding both. We listed what information must be included in the early engagement notices, things like location, date, type of event, especially if we are moving towards allowing other types of outreach events that aren't necessarily an in-person open house. And that's kind of the last big change, was modifying the definition of outreach event, adding details as to what they could be and how they would operate. As you recall, the current ordinance basically states you have to have an open house. We think that certain types of project would be better served with a different type of outreach event, especially being able to utilize technology to improve how we actually engage with the community in different segments, different communities, different neighborhoods. Also, at our last briefing, it was discussed that a public hearing could be held in the 45-day early engagement period, but no decision could be made. There was some concern raised by the council that the public hearing may be rushed in some circumstances and held very early in the process, although that would be very difficult to do. We do understand why there would be some concern. And so in response, staff added a line to the state of the public hearing could not be held in the first two weeks after the early engagement notice has been sent. So that was a list of changes we had, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Councilmember Mono?
Thanks. So my question is, and I think you already answered the question, so if there's a community council that overlaps with another community council, or the project is really close to another one, that project won't be presented at all to the community council meeting? It'll just be at an open house? Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would contact both community councils, or in some cases, three community councils, just depending on the location. For example, I think the Masonic Temple was avenues east-central and central cities. So we would contact them all and tell them we are going to hold an outreach event. If they do schedule the project, and they certainly could do that, to have that reviewed, we would let the applicants know about it, and staff would, we generally do attend anytime we can. But we do want to make sure that we're being fair to everybody and saying, "We will at least for sure open an open house," or "hold an open house" in those events.
So, but when you said it would be one, but not both, it could be both? Is that what you're saying?
It could be both, because the recognized community organizations can certainly put any project on their agenda that they would like. We would still accept that input from them. We may not be able to have a staff member at all of them, but we try to do that when we can, and we always, always, like we said, share that with the applicant, so...
So there would be a public, I guess my concern just gets down to the fact that we're asking these people to go to their community council meetings.
Right.
They might have two community council meetings they go to, and then also to go to one to four other additional meetings that month to see individual projects. The outreach event, would those be combined, like multiple projects at one, or it's one specific event for each?
I think it's going to be different, I think, unique for every type of project. I mean, right now, we hold a monthly open house, but we know that with this type of change, we want to be able to reach out to people in a better way. So it could be that they're shared events where there's multiple things discussed, but it may be, what works for one event is that we hold like an online forum, and we would do that specifically for that one.
I guess for District 5, we have so, I have so many overlapping community council organizations, so it feels like this could, the way it's written at least feels like it could lead to my residents not hearing about projects, because they're not going to attend these additional outreach events. That's where my concern lies. So, I don't know, do you, do you feel like it will lead to better engagement? That's the goal, right?
I think it comes down to what we have the resources to do. Right now, because of how our ordinance is written, we are going, not only in these situations where there's overlapping or within 600 feet, we're essentially having an open house and going to multiple community council meetings.
I understand that, too.
And that is very taxing, and so we, one of the intents of this proposal was to find ways that we can address that.
So I guess...
And it may be that, that, that one of the best practices is, is that even if something is within a community council district, but within 600 feet, maybe that outreach event is at that community council that it is within, and the other community council is invited to attend, or they know about it, and that would be their avenue to come and participate.
I guess my other thought would be, well, maybe the developer can go to all of the, I understand that it's a lot of staff time, and I'm always surprised that I see the same staff member at three or four different community councils, and realize it's after-hours, and that's a lot to ask of, of a staff member. So my other thought would be that the developer could go to those meetings and present the project, and then the community could go to the outreach event if they really cared, so they'd hear about the project, they maybe have questions that staff should answer. But that would require that that outreach event happened after the community council meetings, which seems like it's even further delaying the process.
Right.
I don't know the answer, it's just something that...
And like we said, it is something we would share with the developers or applicants, whoever they are, and in general, most of them want an opportunity to present at these community councils as well as an open house, because, you know, they'd much rather solve that issue, if there are any issues, prior to getting to planning commission, and all of a sudden getting surprised by public comments. But the ordinance doesn't necessarily require that applicants attend, we just, we have required that of them.
Yeah, and I think the piece about it that is a little bit, that I would worry about with just, without having someone from our staff attend, is to accurately hear what the issues are, because they are so, depending on the type of application, sometimes it's, you know, we just don't like it, and it's like, well, that, that's great, but for a conditional use, that's not something that we can use legally to make a decision. And so sometimes those issues get lost, because maybe, maybe the, the people from the community council may not know what the, they probably don't know what the standards are. We do, so we know what to write down and know what to identify. So I would have a big concern without having a planner at, at those meetings, and so I think that there should be, there's a balance, obviously, and maybe we can come up with, I don't necessarily think it is something that needs to be in an ordinance, but we can come up with, you know, our best practices that says, directs our staff on an internal policy on how we would deal with those within 600 feet.
Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you. I know that CAN, you guys are technically under CAN, right?
Correct.
Has a community engagement person, but I think she, that's only one person for the entire department, right? We are headed right down that lane towards budget session, so I, would it be helpful? I, I mean, I don't know about the rest of my council members, but I would certainly be supportive of if we have the funding, be able to fund a community outreach person specifically for plan, I mean, for planning. Plan, CAN, HAND, all the, for planning, right? Where that person's only job would be to, I know how busy you guys are, I know how many new applications we're getting, I know that there's been all of this talk about streamlining processes and making sure that people are getting through the planning commission as seamlessly as possible, and this is part of it, right? It's changing this ordinance and kind of coming up with a way for community outreach, but maybe it would, I'm suggesting, wink, wink, that we put, at least ask the council for an FTE of, of a community outreach person that would just be responsible for these community out, engagement programs with the planning division. Just a suggestion.
And also, councilmember, I just want, and I'd like to spread the entire council, this is the, this ordinance says this is what the bare minimum we have to do for every application. Certainly, we do a lot more for a lot of different applications. As things become more controversial, or if we, we just know that there's going to be a lot of people, we, we go out of our way to try to make sure that we're engaging in the right way possible. So just keep in mind, this is just bare minimum, you have to do this for every single application.
To that point, if I may, sorry. I fully recognize that. I've seen people from the, your department, from Nick's department, over and over at several meetings in several, with, dealing with several issues, and that's why I'm suggesting one person for this particular outreach and for this job, that maybe doesn't have to work a full eight-hour day during the day, and then a full eight-hour night with community members, right? That there would be some flex, there would be something there, right? Because I do, I, I recognize how hard you guys are all working all during the day, and then see several of you at community meetings, or outreach meetings, or working in the evening. And so I've, and I think Darren, to his point as well, and it's not just one community meeting that you're headed to, it's a lot of them.
Right.
And, and so I commend you for that work, and this is my, my way of trying to hopefully alleviate some of that, in, if it were to be possible.
And council staff can follow up with community engagement, which is a team actually within all of CAN's department. There's a few more than ones, that's good, but there, every, every team needs more resources, right? And so we can follow up with them to see what strategies they're using with planning now, and if there's any room for kind of bandwidth expansion.
Yeah, and I, just to add a little perspective on this, too, we have about 800 applications every year that have some level of public engagement. There's, and just to be perfectly frank, there's no way one person can do it. So, just, just putting that, that out there. It has to be a, yeah, it's, I know, I get it, and, and for us, it's about where, where our greatest needs, and we think that, one, change, making the changes, the ordinance gives us more flexibility, but we certainly recognize that, that we only have this much resource to do this much work, so, and it is budget season, so we'll see what comes out of that.
But keep in mind, we're nerds, and we like to do those kind of community things. That's why we got into planning to begin with, so, it's okay.
John does not speak for the division. No, we love, we actually really do love working with the community, I think it's the best part of the job, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sorry. Councilmember Johnston?
I, I agree we're going to support. I know that's more technical sometimes in those community meetings than any one person could answer, so however we can be supportive. One question I, because I'm supportive of this change in general, so that it is notifying councils, be it some flexibility about how you do the outreach, depending on schedules. For instance, in here, when we don't meet on the west side for two months, you need another option, right?
Yep.
Those kind of things. My question is maybe a bit larger than this. If interested community members, and there's probably a smaller number throughout the neighborhood, throughout the neighborhoods, who are very, very invested, knowledgeable about things, and are tracking things, can they access most of this information proactively themselves, online or some other way through the city, without waiting for the presentation to come?
Uh, yeah, usually, so all, all of our, everything that goes into Acela is accessed through the, and available through the Citizens Access Portable. I think the only thing, we have the ability to lock some staff notes and things like that, but I don't think we ever do. But all the documents, all the drawings, every time somebody puts it, we put our emails in there between those projects, so all of that stuff is publicly accessible. So yeah, there, there are ways to do that. Some, I will say that some people in the community are very savvy about using that. It's not exactly the most user-friendly program.
Yeah.
But there are some times where we'll get inquires, or we haven't even seen the project yet, and they're like, "Oh, here's this, this file was just submitted," and we're like, "You know more about it than we do," so...
So I'm, I'm interested in that, kind of following that line of thinking forward, not just for your department, but citywide in a lot of ways, so that citizens would have a more simple way of proactively finding information out, that they could answer themselves, and then maybe ask other questions that come from that.
Yeah.
Is that on the horizon, or are we stepping towards that? What's your thought here?
I think so, within our abilities. The other thing that we do for particularly things that are really hard to get input on, like text amendments and things like that, we, or if it's a big project, we will create, that project will have its own webpage on our, on our website, and so we'll put information there, that gets updated as frequently as we, there's a change or new information developed, and those types of things are, they're right, I think they're like the second, you scroll down two bars or whatever on the website, and I don't know how to describe that right, but, and then it's, it's accessible. So that, that's a, that's an easy way to do it. We also have a kind of a pending projects list that's on that same spot, so somebody can click on one document, and it, it lists the things that are not privately generated that are coming to the council, so everybody can see those as well, and what the status of it is. So if you're a developer and you're building something in, say, the D, or in, let's say, Sugar House, since we're looking at changing those standards, it's on our website now, so you know that there's something imminent coming, because that could impact where you are in your, in your process, so...
Okay. I'd be interested in, from my place in the council, supporting efforts moving in that direction, to make it as, maybe look at the easier interface in some ways. I think the larger ones, text amendments and larger-scale stuff, there's a very technical crowd who are going to pursue those. I think for me, it's the general sort of crowd just below that, who are interested in their neighborhood and a development that's been rumored on a vacant piece of property, or something's being pulled out. How do they get in information fairly easily, so we can get more folks involved?
Yeah.
Without having to go to, wow, you, because right now, what it is, is you've got to go set it up, you've got to go present to whoever can make it that time, essentially, and how can we make that more proactive for the whole public, to take a little bird off of you, and also allow you to answer specific questions as they come up, kind of thing?
Yeah, the other thing I forgot to mention that we're working, and we've had this for a while, but it's had some IT issues, which I, way above my ability to understand, but it's a, it's a active project map, so it's a real-time map that you can actually look on and see an icon wherever there's an application. That's any active application in the planning division, not just those things that go to the planning commission. For whatever reason, like I said, not everything's been showing up, but we are working on trying to fix that. So once that gets going, that's actually, when it first launched and it was working well, it was actually the best place to find information, because you could just zoom in, type in your address, see what's around you, and open it up, and it has a direct link to the Citizens Access Portal from there, to the project in Citizens Access.
From a council and the things, I would be heavily supportive of funding that in some way, if you need more, if the city, not just your department, it's city-wide, a lot of departments, but investing in that to make that work, maybe that's a good platform to start forward, and a lot of ways to be more proactive in public engagement. So I'm looking at a parking lot for us, perhaps, as we get into the budget discussion, and I'm looking at the Mayor Menon Hall's table. No?
We'll tell her later.
All right. She's probably watching us on TV like everybody else, but that would be a priority, I would support heavily.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two is an ordinance for zoning map amendments at 402 and 416 East and 9th And at the table, we have Molly Robinson, Planning Manager, and Nick Norris, Planning Director.
Do you want the applicant up here as well at this point, or?
Typically, typically, we have staff give kind of a brief overview, and then invite the applicant up, but either way?
Yeah. So I'll do the overview as Nick is out. So this is a zoning map amendment at 402 and 416 East, 900 South, also understood as the Southeast Asian market. It also includes the corner property at 4th East, which is where Manoli's is located. Specifically, the Southeast Asian market property is split zone RB and CN, and they are looking to rezone this to CB, which is community business. And in your packet, there's a lot of information about kind of the differences between all of those zones, they're actually very similar in terms of what building scale is allowed, what setbacks are required from the front property line, rear property line, and corner side yard. And we can get into more detail. The Southeast Asian market building specifically is actually split by the zone itself, so that presents some challenges, even if they wanted to do an addition onto that building, or if they, obviously, if they wanted to build a separate building, they, that would mostly fall within the CN zone. Couple example images, I don't know how much of this you want me to go over, this has been presented before council last July, so I can get into greater detail, or we can, we can take questions.
Why don't we go to questions, just because we only have 10 minutes, and so I want to make sure that everybody gets any questions that they have out. Councilmember Johnston?
Thank you. My question is about, I know the changes seem to be fairly minor as far as height and those kind of things, but the question I have is about rear and side setbacks, particularly on that corner lot that's currently CN, as it wraps around a residential building. Talk to me about the rear and side setbacks, and how it applies to that particular parcel in the future.
Do you want me to just talk about these numbers?
Yes, sure.
So, so in the, the CN, in the RB, the CN zone, the front setback and the corner setback, corner yard setback are the same, they're 15 feet. They can go through the design review to reduce that down to zero. In the RB zone, the corner side yard is 10 feet, so on that side street, that's what, depending on how the building would be, any future building would be oriented.
Okay.
Or 20% of the front setback is 20% of the lot depth. So again, that's going to depend on how they try to situate whatever future building there are, there is, but in the staff report, it mentions that 20% of lot depth, if 900 South is the front yard, that makes a setback of about 20 feet. So the intent behind the RB zone was to try to maintain some of the residential character of where this zone is located, and so a lot of it, there is other RB zone properties on 900 South, the biggest concentration of RB zone properties is on 1100 East, where there's been a number of homes converted to non-residential uses and things like that. And, and so that, that's really the intent behind that.
So my question was, changing to a CB zone, where that corner lot jogs back behind the residential building, potentially what could be the impact on that peninsula almost? Where I get it, I get it if we're talking about the rear setback from that corner lot, just for those, but it sort of wraps behind them.
Yeah.
How does it get, depending on the building, obviously, but based on the size of that sort of thing, how could it impact the surrounding properties for setbacks?
So in, in the CN zone, and like, let me just quickly, it's 10 feet, so that, the eastern half of the property is zone CN, and so there'd be, from that, again, it comes down to how it's situated, but assuming a building fronts on 900 South, that property line, the, at the bottom of the screen, that entire jaggedy edge is considered the rear lot line, so that 10 feet would, would apply to that.
On the CB, would it, there's no, there's a 10-foot rear setback?
There's also a 10-foot rear yard setback abutting the properties to the south there.
What's the, do you know the width of that kind of jut? Any sense of that? Okay.
I don't know that.
I'm just wondering, what the, what the likelihood that a building would go in that section versus, say, parking in a building being fronted on 9th closer and then parking behind it? I just, I mean, we don't...
The parking has to be behind or to the side of the building. It's not required, or not allowed in any of the provided front yards, so the odds are that the parking was going to be in that, in that area.
Based into the neighborhood.
It is possible that it could be, the parking could be incorporated into a building, and that be building in that area as well.
Okay. I mean, that was my only concern, was not the fronting on 9th necessarily, but that jagged piece back that could potentially, on two sides of those residences...
Yeah.
Be fairly high, fairly close. Yeah, I don't know what to do about it at this point. be fairly high, fairly close. Yeah, I don't know what to do about it at this point. Because with the C, the, it's currently RB on that corner?
It's CN on the corner.
That's the CN part.
I think that the other thing to keep in mind, too, is that the parcel size itself exceeds the maximum parcel size for the CN and for the RB. So we couldn't just rezone the whole thing to RB, or the whole thing to CN.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's my only concern, is how do we do what we can to ensure it's not on both sides surrounded by a fairly tall building.
But, Mr. Chair, current zoning allows that, right, with the CN?
So the CN, there's no interior side yard setback, and then the rear yard setbacks in the CN and the CB, and same with the CB, also no interior.
CB and CN are the same, rear yard setbacks.
Yeah.
The interior side yard is, Mr. Chair, sorry. The interior side yard is what I want clarification on, though. You said that whole south property line would be considered the rear yard in this case? Or would that be an interior side yard?
Yeah, so this is gonna, this is an interesting parcel, because technically, the, so along Denver Street, that's a corner side yard.
Right, and so that the one that goes east-west.
By definition, the rear yard is the, directly opposite the front yard. So the front yard, if it's on 900 South, goes along that entire property line. So from Denver Street, over along the northern side of that residential property, then south, then west, then north, and then jags over. The interior side yard is actually the very, on the very western side of the property.
It's adjacent to Manoli's.
Yeah, whatever that building and use is.
So that would be the interior side yard. The one that's adjacent to that residential home on, is that Denver Street, would be considered a rear yard?
That's the rear yard.
Have a 10-foot setback and a 7-foot landscape.
And where, where that could change is if
They declared frontage on Denver.
If Denver Street is declared the front, in which case, that's the side yard.
So.
Our world.
Can you, so, it says that there aren't, so there aren't any other CBs nearby, right?
Yeah, I believe the closest is the 9th and 9th Business District.
Okay. And can you show me on the map where the, the concern from one of the residents about blocking Grace Court?
Yeah, so Grace Court, on that image right there, it, yep, it's down behind the
Existing buildings.
The existing buildings.
Oh, okay. So then why was there concern about it blocking deliveries to the new building over on the, the opposite corner?
I, I don't wanna speak for anyone who's making those concerns, so.
Okay. Any other council, or questions, council members?
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear, because I'm not clear generally. We're talking about seven feet landscape setback, plus 10 feet on the rear.
It's a total of 10.
Total of 10, but seven.
Seven of it has to be landscaped.
But if they declare frontage on Denver Street, then it could be zero all along that whole south?
It could.
So that, that's my concern, essentially, is, yeah.
That does change the plan a bit, actually.
Yeah.
Do you, council members, like to hear from the applicant? All right, yeah, if we could have applicant come join us. If you could just tell us your name.
Hello, my name is Kathia Deng. I have been staring at this map for about a year and a half now, so pretty familiar with it. Initially, we, really our intent all along, and still is, is to rectify a split zone issue, which prohibits us from really doing anything to the property, which remains fine in and of itself. Eventually, there has to be a change. We went at it very specifically just to rectify the split zone change. In doing so, at that time, we worked with Lauren, I think it's Priscici, is that how you say it?
Parisi.
Parisi. She's no longer working with Planning Division. But just in talking and having a lot of advice through the Planning Department, we were just led down this direction. You know, we initially asked if they could just do a zone amendment, just by just moving the lot line, that didn't work. So here we are, a year later, pretty much asking for the same thing. We're just, I, I have a whole set of notes here that my architect and friend Mary had printed out with all of the rules and regulations and the considerations that I could go over with you, but I think that you're all very well-versed in knowing what that is. Our primary interest is really just to get some answer on this property, because it, people talk about small business ownership, and we very well support that in the community. We ourselves are small business. It's just my husband and I who bought this building, who, we've also bought other buildings that we've worked on. Manoli happens to be one of them, just contributing what we can in the development of our city. So at this juncture, I guess I'm just, it's in the hands of you all, obviously. Since the very beginning, there wasn't a lot of attention to it, and now there is. And I just know that you guys have a lot to consider. I just want you all to know that we're exactly where we started out. We, the set of plans that you see before you have not been submitted for working plans, they're just concept plans, basically for you to look at, to see the lot's potential, and nothing more than that. Anyway, I don't know if Mary wants to say anything.
I just wanted to bring up a few points that I'd like you to consider. First of all, community business zoning is not that more intensive than the two zonings that it is. We've already addressed sort of the nitty-gritty of the differences between them. Also, consider the size of the parcel. The size of the parcel is 30,000 square feet, which is more characteristic of community business than I would say CN, neighborhood commercial and residential business. Also, consider the size and scare, scale of the 80-year-old building. It's 12,687 square feet. It houses a retail market that's 6,000 square feet, a bakery that's approximately 3,000, and a restaurant that's approximately 2,500 square feet. And then last, I just wanna address the landscape buffer. Is it true that against those R1 5,000 lots, we would have to put the landscape buffer on the side?
That is true.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So there is a setback for the community business on the portion we were discussing.
That's regardless of, of what street they declare frontage on?
Yeah, the set, the side, the
7-foot.
The landscape buffer setback, and I should've meant, clarified that, does apply any time a lot in a, one of these commercial zones, a bought, a butts in R1 zone.
Okay. Okay. So it seems like most of the, the public comments were concerned about there being a patio, but are you saying that you're not necessarily, well, first of all, is, would a patio not also be allowed under the CN zone?
It would.
Yeah, okay. So, and you're saying these are just concept designs. So where is the concern about the patio coming? Is, are you talking about that with this particular?
So keep in mind also that with all those zonings, the RB, the CN, and the CB, we would have to meet the requirements per the zoning. So if there, you know, that's, includes parking requirements that are the same across the board, and patio requirements of, as far as proximity to residences and that sort of thing.
But I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not even seeing a patio on your design?
It's just, it's to the east of that
Oh, okay.
Proposed concept.
Oh, I can't see it. Sorry. Okay, thanks.
And we, again, they're just, we were excited to sort of exhibit a potential of doing something great to bring the community together. It's obviously got to go, we're this far a year later, and not even rectifying a zone issue. So imagine what that will be for us to sit on a project after we have submitted working plans, and all the processes that follow. We intend to follow all those guidelines, such as we have now today, sitting in front of you. I mean, I flew back from California yesterday just to be at this meeting, and I fly back out tomorrow. So you just let us know where, which direction we're, we're just, we can't, our hands are tied, and we're just as invested, obviously, in the community, bought this project, kind of sitting on it, and trying to figure out what to do moving forward.
Councilmembers, other questions? Councilmember Mono?
So I assume, Nick, your answer's gonna be, it's really complicated, but is there any way to approve the rezone, subject to frontage being declared on 9th South?
Sure, there's a way.
But is that, is that?
Yeah. I don't wanna say to put something like that through development agreement, that's the way that the city's handled it in the past.
And it's complicated.
There's other cities that, that you just put zoning conditions on it, that just simply state, yeah, it's approved, but the front yard has, or the frontage on 900 South has to be considered the front yard. So it depends on how you guys wanna do it.
But we don't have a mechanism to do that, that's not.
Oh, yeah, you absolutely have a mechanism to do that.
With development agreement, but it's complicated, right?
A development agreement, but we could, staff could work with the attorney's office. In this case, because it's a singular and very easily verifiable condition, to me, that feels a little different than some of the reasons why the city has gone the development agreement route in other cases. So I don't know, I don't know. I hate to like, overpromise a simple solution, but I think that we can.
Is that something the applicant would be interested in doing, agreeing to have the frontage on 9th South?
I mean, that's the intent of what we've proposed so far, and that's just, to me, is a no-brainer, where you're addressing 9th South and 9 Line, and
Mm-hmm. I agree.
And there's no, there's no, we can't guarantee if someone else bought the property, but our intent would be to not impact the neighbors in any way, or, you know, more than they are now.
I think what I'm just looking for is some way to give at least as much of a buffer to the residences as possible, but still allow the, the application to proceed, because I think your intentions are correct, and you have a parcel that has two different zones, which is a problem in the first place. So then it wasn't your fault, I don't think, so. I think, I don't know if that solves all the concerns, I'm sure it does not, but maybe it's a little bit better.
I, we, we wanna be able to utilize 9th South. Part of the properties that we own and invest in, and where we live, is about 9th South. And I know that the master plan calls for some really great things that are moving along. I think we've learned a lot having, have, you know, owning a building on Upper 9th and 9th. You know, that is a staple of examples, both good and bad. I think that we're very transparent in the process of, and the way that we're going about this. Open dialogue, emailing, you know, I've returned emails to residences that have connected with me directly, willing to have open discussions with people. I think that's important. It's part of what commitment to community is. So I think, so long as we, so long as the city has an implemented plan for us to follow, we really want to do good by that plan. And so if 9th South is the frontage, where I think that's the direction that it needs to be, it's, it's gonna do the city some, some great, for some, some good, if we developed it in such a way that everyone can enjoy it, and without the disruption of the neighbors. That's not our intention. It, our intention is not to do harm to the neighborhood at all.
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Fowler?
Could we ask staff to reach out with the attorney's office and follow up on that question? I think I agree with Darren, in that I, I think our intent would be to just create some of that buffer zone, and, and not create, but require that buffer zone in the back, if there would be a way to do that, and still change the zone in some way, right? So if we could, maybe, if it's okay with the chair, if we ask staff to follow up on that question?
It's, it's okay with me. Do we wanna take, it's, it's up to, to all of you, if, so we could do a straw poll and say, do we wanna add that, or not? I think this is on our agenda for our formal meeting tonight, so I don't know if
Public hearing and?
It's just setting.
Oh, it's just setting the public hearing, yeah, okay. So I would, I guess I'm saying I would take a straw poll, to see if that's what council members wanna do.
And can I just add, I think the, before we take a straw poll, the condition of the buffer starts to get into the realm of more development agreement, because then you're talking about what the building looks like. The frontage is, I think, a simpler, a simpler condition, because to me, that's just a single verifiable condition that would enable an ordinance, which is kinda what I think, what we have talked about with the attorney's office before on budget conditional appropriations. I'm looking at Katie, hoping that she doesn't give me that look like, you're saying crazy things. So, but I think it would need a follow-up conversation with her, but it would help staff to understand, is the buffer equally as important as the frontage on 9th South, or does the frontage on 9th South satisfy your condition of?
Well, I think the frontage on 9th South satisfies the condition, because it, it enacts the requirement of the setback, which is the point. So my question is simply, can we, and I don't know if it needs to be a straw poll, I'm just looking at, is that actually a possibility to do? If it is a possibility, and we don't need that question answered, because we already have the answer to the question, then I would propose a straw poll that that's what we look at doing. Does that make sense?
Yes. Right now, I don't know. I don't think so. I think it's, it's a pretty big shift from how we, how we've done things, but it feels like there's a, maybe a path, because it's just this one verifiable thing, but let us get together and.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if now would be the appropriate time for a straw poll, rather than just a, for me personally, a follow-up of whether or not it's even possible.
Okay, so let's.
Do we wanna have any more discussion before that, or?
Well, I think you're not asking for a straw poll anymore. You're, you're saying that you just wanna, okay. Okay. I mean, I feel like the information that you've given, I feel satisfied about that. I also think it would not make a lot of sense practically to have the entrance beyond Denver Street. So I think that that is like, yeah, I think that.
I'd agree with you, Mr. Chair, on that, I think, but common sense isn't always common, especially if it gets sold to somebody else in the future. I agree with the intentions are right, and I think the, our discussion is correct. I'm, I'm looking to Nick, perhaps, in the future, and saying, this is just me speaking now, in our master transit plan, we've identified transit corridors, and theoretically, in my head, those corridors become different than other pla, other, other roads. One are kinda north-southeast-west of them. They may all have residential in some, on them, but these are gonna be differently developed. We may need to talk a little bit about a 9th South corridor, a second, you know, those major ones we're thinking about, the bus routes on, and the details like this about just the expectation is the frontage is on that road, where does trash go? If these, we're gonna have a lot of a butt against neighborhoods like this, and those kinda details would be where my quality of life for the neighbors and the business goes. How do you find that in the code? I don't know. So that's what I've been intrigued by going for, and I support this one. But I'm wondering if this is gonna be a harbinger of things to come, and we need to think about it?
No, I'll, I'll flat-out say, welcome to the, the realm of, of zoning code reform. I mean, we, our code doesn't focus on the things that matter, and it focuses on the things that don't, and we need to fix it. So what do you need from us?
New zoning code in a couple years.
Oh, it's an open-ended question, obviously.
No, yeah, and, and, I mean, I don't know if you actually want me to give you an answer that opens the door into how my mind works a little bit on this, but I'm glad to do it, if that's, if that's what you're looking for. I think that, I'm constantly looking at what other cities are doing when it comes to changing their zoning. And, and there's a number of things that have been happening around the country that have given me pause about citywide wholesale rezonings. And if anyone's read or heard anything about the process that Austin, Texas went through, they spent $8 million trying to redo their code, and they scrapped it and started over. I don't know that that's something that we want to do. I think when you look at the process that Denver went through, that Miami went through, and the number of years it takes, we need to find a different went through, and the number of years it takes, we need to find a different way. And I think that we are uniquely positioned, if we had the time, to be able to do it in a way that reflects actually what our plans want, what we are constantly hearing from the communities about what their issues are and concerns, and do it in a right way.
So when you say time, I'm equating that in my head to, I can't give you time. Can we give you staff?
So time, to me, time means we, time means we, we stop doing the things that we've been doing. That gets back to our code focusing on the little things. Or we have more people. That, that's it. That's the only way that we create more time.
And I, I am super interested in this discussion and would love to hear your thoughts, but we're very over.
Time.
And, yeah, and time is an issue we're having right now. So, yes, Councilmember Valdemora.
I just have a question. So with the question that we're going to answer, the question that council member, will that delay our action agenda, like, at all? Because how, this is the second time you guys are here. It's been a little bit that it was approved, like, we need to move on.
No, we're just setting the date tonight, so...
So we continue setting the date.
Yeah, so we can continue to set the date, whether we have that question by tonight or not.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can we not talk about having a conversation about what Nick is saying?
I want that conversation.
I would love to have that briefing.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Good. Well, all right then. Just take that preview of coming events. Okay, sorry. We're on item number three, which is 2064 North and 2066 North at 2200 West, zoning map amendment. At the table, we have Brian Fulmer, David Gelner, and Molly Robinson.
Okay, as you noted, this is a zoning map amendment. It's a request to rezone four parcels from the AG2 agricultural zone to the M1 light industrial zone. It's about 2.8 acres of land total. It is just to the west of 215 and south of 2100 North, as indicated on the photo that I've pulled up. No specific site development plan's been submitted with this application. It is, and this is a farther out zoomed-out view, it's in the inland port boundaries. The strip that runs along the east side of the airport on 2200 West is at the very north terminus of that. We looked at a number of things. The North Point Small Area Plan showed the future uses in this area as business park. Again, that business park uses are only allowed as part of a planned development, so it limits the occurrence of those. So we were looking at, this is while it, the proposal is not strictly consistent with the future land use designation in the plan. It is consistent with the intent of the plan to allow some business and retail service type of uses for workers in that area. Another condition, another consideration that we had was, by virtue of this being within the inland port overlay boundaries, even if it stays AG, all M1 uses are allowed on the property. It's just a matter of what process it would go through. For instance, if the property were zoned AG and a developer were proposing a use that's allowed in the M1 zone that's not listed in the AG, they could do that M1 use, but through a conditional use process. So it ultimately doesn't change what's could be developed on the property, only the process that they would have to go through for creating that development. So in that sense, probably negligible impact on what ultimately could be developed on the property in the future, just the process it would have to follow. So staff recommended approval, and the planning commission forwarded a positive recommendation to council on the change.
Questions on this one, council members? Nobody cares about the setbacks on this? Wow. Wow. Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, Councilmember Johnston.
Didn't we see the property just west of this last year, two years ago?
Two years ago, the, or, what, a year and a half ago, the property that's just to the west of there, that's kind of a sideways U-shaped, was going through the same process requesting...
Did it get withdrawn or something? I can't remember now.
It was recommended that they go back to the property owner because I didn't feel comfortable rezoning an AG property around a homestead of AG. So that's why it was sent back, and I don't know where that current process is, but I would continue to hold firm on that.
Is...
Well, no, this, I'm fine, comfortable on this, this current proposal, but on that prior one that we had 18 months ago, I would continue firm on not rezoning that. This one I'm fine moving forward with.
But the other one, AG, yeah.
It's a prior project that, that, I don't know if it's coming back or when it's coming back.
Is, this is, I'm trying to be maybe a little vague. In any discussions about inland port boundaries in this year, next years, or future years, moving the boundary on this, this area, is this part of discussions long-term? Because right now, it doesn't functionally change a whole lot, other than the conditional use process to go through.
Correct.
If it gets pulled out of the inland port, then it's a different deal, right?
Correct.
That's the only thing that gives me pause about the, the rationale of...
Well, the, it would, no matter what, it's already in the overlay zone, and they could move forward as an M1, as a conditional use, as stated.
Is the applicant here, and do they want to speak?
The applicant is here.
Okay.
Kevin Colatse. The only reason I'm starting this, as you can see, the neighbor to the south, they wanted me to go to M1 within, within a couple of years because they're building their development, and they want to be able to build closer to my property, and I didn't care. And through that, I needed conditions for future use to have a second entrance out of there. So they're giving me that concession. So that's the reason I'm changing the zoning.
Councilmember Mono.
Did I understand that correctly? The, the property owner to the south wants to develop, and because it's a different zone, they have a bigger buffer?
Different setbacks, I believe, so they can build closer to my property, which I can see the use of the property that I have.
Shared access agreement or something out of it?
Yeah, a second, a secondary access.
Interesting.
Okay. No other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number four on our agenda. This is an ordinance for a alley vacation on Washington Street. And joining us at the table will be Brian Fulmer, Myara Lima, and John Anderson.
I'll do a quick intro while they're getting the, this set up. This is a city-owned alley at approximately 1040 South Washington Street, which is between 200 and 300 West. It runs east and west between Washington Street and an abandoned rail right-of-way, which UTA currently owns. The applicant and family members own seven of the eight abutting parcels to the alley, and the other property owner is also said to be supportive of the alley closure. And all adjacent properties are zoned general commercial. With that, turn it over to Myara.
Oh, I have a couple smiles, oh, sorry, smiles, slides to show the location and conditions of the alley. I also have a couple smiles for you. So as Brian explained, the applicant owns the majority of the parcels abutting the alley, and he would like to vacate the entire alley to consolidate within, with his properties. And the intention is to sell the property for development. He had mentioned for some kind of housing project, and the applicant is here to answer that type of question, but as I understand, the, the properties have been put on the market already. The justification for the alley vacation is the lack of use, and the applicant has stated that the alley creates an unsafe condition. The alley has not been used for several years. The last aerial that we can find of this alley unobstructed is from 1997. And then from 2002 on, we can see that has been occupied by vehicle storage or storage of vehicle parts. It's unclear through the pictures. And then in 2010, a fence was installed on the east side of the alley, and then later on, a fence was installed on the west side. So right now, the alley is completely blocked off. So staff found that that, the argument for an unsafe condition is not clear, since the, the alley has been closed off. But the lack of use could have been contributed by the alley being fenced off, but it also does not have a good connection. The only connection to the alley is through Washington Street, and Washington Street, that you can see on this picture, dead ends about 200 feet south of the alley. And then Washington Street itself doesn't feel like a public right-of-way. It feels like more, like a private drive. And that last picture, you can see the fence and the storage that's been taking place. Let's see if I have anything else. Staff didn't think that that is a, this alley has a potential to be used as a transportation connector or an urban design element, given the current uses around it. Also, the properties being zoned CG, which is the most intense commercial district, district we have in the city, doesn't help with that. The uses in a CG are heavy commercial, outdoor storage, that type of thing. It does include residential, but with those allowed permitted uses, we don't see that alley being used for transportation connection. And that's about it, really. Any questions?
Councilmember Johnston.
Can I ask which other property is not owned by the applicant?
It's the 1026.
On the corner?
Yep.
Okay, so if the alley is vacated, then as their commercial, they have to purchase it at fair market value?
Yes.
Even 1026, to purchase their half of that portion?
Yes.
Is that how it goes? Okay.
Councilmember Mono.
So there's a policy question, the staff report. Does the council wish to have an alley disposition policy discussion with the administration? That's something that I personally am quite interested in. And this, maybe this particular alley might not be the hill that I'm going to die on, but I would, I think that it could be such an amazing asset for, for instance, that's the UTA corridor. Maybe it will never be used, but what if it became something like the S-line, and there was a public walking, walkway on it, and that alleyway became a, a connection into what gets redeveloped into a mixed-use commercial residential zone, and that alleyway could be the safe public connection to the center of that block? I think there's so much potential with these alleyways. Again, maybe this one is not realistic that that would happen, since everything is owned by basically one property owner. I just want to make the point that there's a lot of potential that these alleyways could have. Understand the, the maintenance and, and financing problems with it, but it, we, if we get rid of it, we lose that forever.
Councilmember Fowler.
Darren, did you just say that because you saw the mayor walk in?
I mean, it doesn't hurt to get brownie points, right?
Right.
Any other questions, council members?
What are the current uses here again? So you have out, the vehicle outdoor storage there. All these properties are included in that, I believe. And these two here are owned by the same people, and I think it's wholesale distribution, these two here. I'm actually... Yeah, those, the immediate. So outdoor storage over here for vehicle parts, and then wholesale distribution, these two here. I'm not really sure on the further area.
The reason why I ask is usually, depending on what warehouse areas we're looking at, like I can see here on the map, that there's a Salt Lake chrome plating business. So if this, if this property's been there for a long time, they might be contaminated, and then there's this whole process that, you know, we might not have the funds to, to do. And so it, it's kind of like a, I kind of agree with the planning commission's decision. So, thank you.
Oh, sorry, the, there's a rehab place over here north of Brooklyn Avenue.
No? Okay. All right. So is, do we want to hear? Oh, yeah, we're going to be setting the date unless we want to hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here? Do they want to speak? Would you like to speak? You don't have to, and I don't think... Okay.
Name and address, is that what you...
Just your name?
Rusty Balo. I, I work with the applicant, and the idea behind this, first of all, the, the two buildings that you point to, it's not wholesale distribution. It's a cleaning company. They clean uniforms, is what they do. And then the building to the, with the darker color roof on it has, this one, yeah, 1050, that is actually an old Mrs. Fields cookie, and then it was Maxwell's chocolates, and now it's nothing. It just sits vacant. This is an area you don't want to go to after dark. And Volunteers of America is across the street, that's who's across the street there. So the idea behind it is, is first of all, he, he fenced it off because of the issues of bad activities happening back there. He's actually found a dead person back there. And the idea also is that the highest and best use for this property, at least we feel at this time, is probably some sort of low-income multi, multi-housing. And we've had some, we've got it on the market. We've had a decent response from the marketplace on that, but obviously, one of the contingencies of that going forward would be to have that alley vacated because it bisects the property. I completely understand what you're saying about the idea of a public right-of-way there and how that could grant some access. But, you know, Brooklyn Ave is a pretty quiet street. It dead ends into the, to the tracks line, so it's not like you've got a heavy traffic situation on Brooklyn, so people could use that, I think, in a safe manner to, to access Washington Street and any development that would occur back there. So realistically, that's, that's, that's the main idea behind it. It's just to, it's not being used, hasn't been used for a long time, and it prohibits the future development of the property, at least in a way that we see with the highest and best fit. But obviously, that's up to you guys to decide.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I don't think we have any questions. Thank you for coming up. All right. We can move on to our next item, which is draft public lands needs assessment. So at the table, we'll have Allison Rowland from City Council staff, and Nancy Montieth, landscape architect, and Kristen Riker from Director of Public Lands.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Maybe while Bobby and Nancy are, are getting their presentation ready, I can just mention that there is a staff report associated with this lengthy and, and complex and detailed report. It does not do justice to all the work that the department has done, obviously. But there are some questions in there, some policy questions that may interest you, including first, a list that the, I was saying department, I should say department and division, have included in the, in their own draft, which I think are some excellent questions for the council to consider. And then there are several others that have to do with things that the council may particularly be interested in, like the timeline, issues of equity, population size, geographic distribution. And then, of course, funding needs, the perennial council question. It also touches to some extent on the council's previous discussion of park rangers. There's some, there's some issues that may arise from that. And finally, new kinds of parks that are proposed and new ways of using, of potentially using golf as an open space, or how those two things combine. So I just wanted to give that introduction. So, I just wanted to give that introduction.
Thank you, Allison. Mr. Chair, council, thanks for having us today. We're really excited to present the needs assessment. So, before we jump into it, I wanted to highlight a couple things that are in the needs assessment that we'll be going over, but that I think are really important. Nancy and I are presenting this. This is our first needs assessment that the city has done for public lands. Our city's population has grown faster than our consultants anticipated when this study was first completed. And more people are moving downtown, and they're looking for places to live and to work and to walk their dog and to play. We think it's public lands' job to work with the mayor and council to make sure that access to nature and recreation opportunities remain at optimal levels, so that the residents of Salt Lake City can continue to experience the high level... The high quality of life that they are reporting now, which came out of our statistical survey. We did a statistically valid survey. It was conducted in 2017 for this project, and it reported that 81% of the residents think that Salt Lake City currently provides adequate parks and recreation services. What most residents may not recognize is that population growth in Salt Lake City, without increasing park acreage, will likely result in more people using our parks, and there may be more user conflicts in our parks. So, we see it as our job to recognize and plan for this growth. The needs assessment calls attention to the impact our growth will have on our existing level of service. In fact, it shows that for us to provide parks at the same level of service 20 years from now, as we have today, we would need to add 94 acres of new parkland to have the same level of service. Another important point is that 39% of our residents say that the primary reason they visit their most frequented park is because it's close to home. In fact, 97% of our residents in Salt Lake City think it's important to live within a 10-minute walk of a park. This reaffirms the walkability goals previously... Previous planning efforts, such as Plan Salt Lake and the Downtown Plan, have stated. It also tells us that residents care about the proximity of their homes to their parks and reminds us that walkability builds community, provides equal access to people, cultures, and activity. The central community, Sugar House, downtown planning areas have more gaps when you consider how a resident might get to a park or trail by foot. So, acquisition strategies need to target those areas. The needs assessment documents all the research completed in this project, the analysis and findings, and it gives us an indication of existing and future needs and desires for parks and natural lands in the city. We are already using the findings of this assessment to inform our decisions when making funding requests to the mayor and council for installation of new amenities, improvements, and acquisitions. Finally, the information and data gathered from this assessment has laid the groundwork for us to use in the near future to help our... To develop our comprehensive master plan. Okay. So, Nancy was the lead on this project. She was our lead project manager. We worked with Landmark Design, Lewis Young Robertson, and Birmingham Y2 Analytics. We had a robust community outreach. We did Open City Hall, a statistically valid survey, workshops, outreach events, and stakeholder meetings.
So, one of the first things that we did was look at our existing conditions, and we analyzed what do we currently have in our inventory? How is it distributed? And how easy is it to get to? So, we have around 2,700 acres in our inventory today. And of that, 1,700 acres are natural lands. We divided those into non-urban and urban. And non-urban describes natural lands that require relatively little maintenance, like the foothills. And urban natural lands require maintenance levels that are similar to a developed park. Additionally, we have 700 acres of developed parks that range from 100 acres in size to less than an acre, with 88 parks total and an average acre park size of about eight acres. We also have 300 additional acres of manicured landscapes that we take care of for facilities, the cemetery, medians, and other types of landscapes. Another measure of what we have is level of service, which I'm sure you've heard that metric before, but it's a standard metric that really says, how much is the city providing per resident? And it's actually... The metric is in acres of park per thousand residents. So, it's a useful metric to look at, how does it vary across the city, or how does city-to-city vary? Levels of service for developed parks is a reliable metric when comparing or benchmarking across other cities. It's a little more challenging to compare that level of service when it comes to natural lands, because natural lands is so dependent on the geography of the city and the natural resources that are available to the community. Level of service is also used to determine impact fee assessments for growth.
Okay. In order to get a clear picture of Salt Lake City's system, we took a look at two cities, Boise, Idaho, and Fort Collins, Colorado. These two cities were selected based on their similar population size to Salt Lake City, their western location, and their role as regional population centers. You can see from this side, that slide, that Salt Lake City has less parkland and considerably less open space than other cities that were benchmarked. What's important to point out here is that parks and recreation agencies are... They vary as much as the cities and the communities that they serve. And so, what works for one may not work for another. And it is really difficult to benchmark us against other cities. That being said, to look at this a little bit, Salt Lake City's 1,700 acres of open space is small in comparison. However, our open space is supplemented by 8,000 acres of functional natural lands owned by the University of Utah, Salt Lake City Utility... Public Utilities, US Forest Service, and other private landowners. We also have national parks. We also have the Uinta Mountains and several others in the area. So, the number of acres of natural lands for each community has to be based on the unique features surrounding the city, the community's priorities and interests, as well as the availability of other public lands owned by other agencies. Our parkland... Our parkland's level of service is also significantly lower at 3.5 acres per 1,000 residents. When the National Parks and Recreation Association gathered park statistic metrics from cities across the United States in 2019, they found that 10.1 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents is average across the cities in the US. So, Salt Lake City has to decide what level of park service is important for Salt Lake City residents. Is 3.5 acres per 1,000 enough? Or do we need more? It's a question we have to answer. This is an opportunity for the master plan to seek input.
I was wondering if I could ask a question on that previous slide?
You bet.
If you look at the 3.5 acres per thousand, Boise is right within the national suggested average, right? 10.1.
Yeah.
My question is, what are we paying per thousand compared to Boise and Fort Collins? Are 3.5 acres for each thousand residents compared to Boise at 10.1 per thousand to Fort Collins, 6.8 to 1,000?
I won't have that memorized, but I do believe it's in here.
Does that make sense?
The question? No.
So, my question is, Nancy, if you look at your top line there, on park level of service, 3.5 acres per thousand for Salt Lake, I'm wondering what that... What we're paying per maintenance-wise?
Per maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, I can find that.
Maintenance for Boise for that same, because they have 10.1 acre per thousand and Fort Collins.
We have... Here's the expense.
I just know what we're spending comparatively.
Okay. Did we compare... Oh, here, right here. So...
So, Salt Lake City is 7269 per acre, and Boise is 9125, and Fort Collins is 8546. So, you can find that on page 59 of the document, is a full table that talks about O&M capital and FTEs per capita.
Can we go on? Or do you want...
Rest one?
Hey, this slide shows the existing conditions analysis. It's the level of service across the city. And just for clarification, at the time this report was being put together, the Salt Lake City had 10 planning areas that were established by the planning department, and we now have another one, the downtown planning area, and that will be called out separately in our master plan. It just wasn't at the time we did this. Three of the areas, the northwest quadrant, the airport, City Creek, or... Yeah. Airport and City Creek are predominantly non-residential, and they make up 60% of the city's land. So, for the purposes of this report, we focused on the other seven areas that have the residential population base, and these areas were the focus of our study. When taking a look at acreage by planning area, if you look at this report, it's real easy to see that the central community has the lowest level of park service and no natural lands within its boundary. As Nancy will cover in our future needs analysis, the central community is the planning area slated for the most future growth in the city, and it has the least amount of public green infrastructure. Our parks' level of service is a metric that we watch very closely, and it's difficult to move that needle. The amount of affordable, available land to develop large parks within the city, it's hard to find. It's rare occasion when we can acquire large portions of land to develop into green space. So, if we can't find the land, other option... If there's no other affordable options, because land is very expensive in the city, we can look at mini-parks, we can look at greenscapes, and we can look at partnerships with private groups.
Okay. Part of the existing conditions analysis was looking at distribution. So, distribution of parks, size, location, and amenities within those parks. We looked at a whole range, everything from playgrounds to skate parks. And we found, by and large, that the amenities in parks were well distributed across the city. We did find some gaps, and this one, the multi-use fields, really illustrates that, again, the central city planning area with the greatest population and the fastest growth had no multi-use fields. Since this time, as you're well aware, we added a field to Pioneer Park, and it was proven to be immediately popular and did a lot to positively activate that space. And I think it illustrates the role that having what people want to do in these spaces and having high-quality amenities are really important to create positive experiences in places people want to go. The other thing we did during the study is the first-ever asset condition assessment, where we rated the condition of every amenity in our parks, good, fair, and poor. And what you see at the top is a pie chart that aggregates all of that data. And it's a little bit... It's very generalized. But I think one of the things that it can do is give you a snapshot, and as we collect more long-term data on asset condition, we can evaluate the effectiveness of capital investment, as well as take different lenses to maybe look at equity and distribution of funding over time. We already heard that, again and again, that walkability is extremely important for the places that people choose to use and a livable city. So, this map represents a geospatial analysis. That is, the pink areas are areas within half a mile walk along existing sidewalks and trails from a park. So, this is a little finer detail than just doing your radial kind of analysis. And so, all the areas that are outside of pink are gaps in that walkability analysis and could be a key target for adding new facilities. And then, along with that, I mean, again, reinforcing that parks being close to home is the number-one reason. And two other reasons that are really drive park visitation is trees and atmosphere and exercise. And trees and atmosphere, a little bit... It's a little vague. I think atmosphere could be aggregated as beauty, comfort, cleanliness, sort of the feeling of comfort in a space. And exercise is not necessarily the highest. It's first, having a beautiful, comfortable place and a place to do things. 97% again, think it's important to live within walking distance to a park. Community values. So, 72% of residents visit parks once a month or more, and 58% of residents use paved trails once a month or more. What we did find is that park use varies quite a bit from planning area to planning area. The two planning areas that saw the greatest use, Central Community and Sugar House, they have high population, but they also have our two regional parks. And of that, even 22% of all city residents cite Liberty Park as their most frequently used park. There are some other things to take a closer look at as we move forward in the planning, is that east-west side residents are more likely to travel east to visit parks than the other way around. And it's... We don't have a clear understanding on what that might be. It could be real or perceived ideas about condition or preference.
Well, it also might be that we don't have a destination park on the west side.
Yeah.
Correct? Where Sugar House is a destination park, Liberty Park is a destination park. And when we look at the acreage in District 1, I think it's kind of unfair for us to put in the regional athletic complex when that's pay-to-play. So, that's not a fair assessment in District 1 to say that when we have, you know, 7.1 per whatever we're looking at, it's not a true assessment.
Yeah. And, you know, we went back and forth, what to include and what not to include, and we ended up including all the areas that are managed within public lands. But when you look at the northwest planning area in particular, and you remove the acreage that's dedicated to the rack, the level of service in that planning area is 3.6 acres. So, it's still... I mean, it's at the citywide average, a little bit above. And I think you're right about the west side and the Jordan River really becoming a regional asset, and I think the potential with Jordan Park and the five contiguous parcels, and we have a few projects in the pipeline to really try and connect all those spaces and create a regional draw. So, there's huge opportunity. So, a lot... In our statistical survey, kind of drilling down on the values of desires, there was a series of questions. And the first question was, where do you live? And the second question was, what park do you go to most often? And then, this question is, what improvements would you like to see at that particular park? And select up to three. And the three top requested improvements are restrooms, maintenance, cleanliness, lighting, and safety features. So, recurring themes throughout.
So, this next one is, we asked residents their willingness to pay more for public lands services. And we asked them, would you be willing to pay $25, $50, or $100 more a year? And 86% of the residents stated they'd be willing to pay more for parks at the $25-a-year level. This next one is priority investment. So, we asked, if you have $100 to spend on additional parks, recreation programs, facilities, or trails in Salt Lake City, how would you divide it among these choices? Existing parks, open space, maintenance received clear priority when it came to our spending. Residents also cited increased safety measures, walking and bike trails, and new neighborhood and community parks as priorities. When asked, which of the following special-use facilities should Salt Lake City consider funding and constructing, respondents indicated educational facilities, such as an urban farm or the nature center. We are making some progress in some of the other priorities. The city is working on our Jordan River canoe trail, and we recently installed a fishing pond at Fairmont Park. Yes, they do.
Yeah. So, as Kristin mentioned earlier, the consultants projected, how are we going to grow into the future? And, you know, at the time of the study, this was fairly conservative to what the actual numbers are. But at that time, the projected growth to 2040 would be adding 27,000 new residents, which is a significant amount. And when you multiply just the 3.5, not the national park average, but our park average or level of service, you would need 94 acres. And I think one of the things that we heard early on is residents feel they have adequate parks and open space, but I don't think they realize that as you add more and more people, it's sort of like water temperature going up, and then you have more and more competition for every... And then you have more and more competition for every baseball field, every playground, every dog park. And so I think proactively addressing this growth is going to be critical for Salt Lake City to maintain its quality of life. One of the things we did is, where should we target future improvements and new facilities? And this is an aggregate of five different maps that our consultants did based on, it's actually a little old 2010 census data, but it's a population data, household income, youth and children, seniors, areas of potential growth, and that equal what this map represents, high-needs areas. So the areas in red represent this added addition, all things being equal, where we should focus on new facilities and new investments. One of the things I did want to mention is it's irrespective of existing parks and land. So it will also give us a clue on where we should invest, even in our existing infrastructure. So this just says where the need is. And then, again, coming back to the walkability map, that it's the most important thing for both connectivity, accessibility, and what the public has identified as their highest value for park use. In evaluating future investment factors such as location, quality, equity, and accessibility all provide direction on how best to grow our park system.
Okay, as a new master plan is developed, there's a real opportunity for us to address parks and natural lands as essential elements for better air quality, for climate change mitigation, and energy efficiency and environmental justice. There's a lot of questions that we're going to have to answer, and here's just a few of them. How do we improve our existing parks and natural lands? We need to balance the perceived need for more playing fields with the general public's desire for more passive parks. How do we create more equitable, connected park system? Again, we have to balance. There's a desire for improved maintenance for existing parks, natural lands and trails. And then we also have a need to provide additional parkland to achieve park equity and to connect our system across the city. How do we respond to community values and desires? Where do we add new service to meet the needs of the growing city? We have to ask ourselves, is Salt Lake City willing to accept lower levels of service as the population continues to grow? If not, is our existing level of service adequate at 3.5 acres per 1,000? How do we create this actionable plan? Public Lands has already contracted with a consultant to utilize the data that's gathered in this report to begin the comprehensive master plan. The final plan will represent an effort to ensure Salt Lake City's needs are aligned with our park system offerings, that our parks are equitably accessible, and that for the next 10 years, as our city continues to grow, we have a plan for our green public spaces. And we hope to work on that with council and with the mayor's office, stakeholders, and the public in the coming weeks and months. So with that, we are happy to take questions.
Councilmember Valdemaros.
Do you count private parks or mini parks? Did you count in this study?
No, they were not included.
Okay.
And they do add. I mean, you could see, we did include, I think we really wanted to understand what was within our realm of control, so.
We did look at county parks, because there are two in the city.
All right. Thanks.
Member Mono.
On that level-of-service metric.
Yes.
Is that really accurate to the experience of somebody living in the city, having access to space? I know it's based on the number of acres per 1,000 people, but there's some parks that are much more usable and have a lot more amenities to them, and other parks that have really no amenities. So, I mean, how can we understand that at a finer level than just how many acres of park we have?
I think that's where you get to the kind of quality and value, sort of desires and values, and understanding about what makes a placemaking. And how do you sort of create spaces that have the things that people want? And what role, there is some maps you'll find in the document that show mapping and sort of distance to mini parks, community parks, and regional parks. And they would have sort of a wider kind of net. And so you have to look at it in a lot of different ways. I think the purpose really of a level-of-service metric is that it's, it's like a ruler.
I think you also have to consider, why aren't people using those other parks? And maybe it's because those other parks haven't had improvements in a long time. And so I think that's a good thing for us to also look at is underutilized parks, because they are green space, and people want green space within a half-mile of their house, within walking distance. So it's not that they're not valuable, that they're not being used, but we need to look at, why aren't they being used? And what do we need to add there?
I think that's really important, because if you only focus on the number of acres per 1,000 residents, then the answer is, let's find more parks, which we all know is very expensive and hard to do. But if there are already parks that are being underutilized, it seems like focusing on actually making those, adding amenities to those existing parks is a much better use of our money than.
Yesterday, we met with a.
Trying to find something that doesn't exist.
Yesterday, we met with a developer who's putting in, you know, 500 new units. And he said that he was using, it's on the nine-line, and he was advertising his units by saying, "It's on the nine-line, and it's within walking distance of Liberty Park." And I said, "Well, how many people do you expect?" And he said, "Oh, I don't know, maybe 1,000 people, just in that one unit" that he's developing, and he's got two units. And I just, I think, wow, we're growing so fast. And he's directing all those folks to Liberty Parks, which makes Liberty Park that much busier. And I just think we're going to see a lot of growth in some of these parks in the next couple of years. And how they're used, it's going to change.
Let me have Jen Bruno pop in really quick, and then Councilmember Fowler.
I think.
And then Councilmember Rogers.
Jamesy was first.
Okay.
Just to the point that Councilmember Mono pointed out that there's different needs and that cause people to feel different experiences, those also have different funding sources. And from a budget analyst's perspective, it's almost easier to find funding for new park acreage. It's much more difficult to find funding for improvements in existing parks. And that has to do with the impact fee statute and how it's written. It's out of our control, unfortunately. And so I've noticed that, you know, as they've put together city budgets, it's always, it almost feels easier to find money for buying new park acreage than it is to add amenities in existing parks or, you know, increase the maintenance level of existing parks. And that's something that we're just constantly kind of struggling with.
But would we then add new park acreage that we cannot maintain?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, we do that all the time. And then we ask, and then we ask public services to absorb it in their budget, and then they look at us like we're crazy. And then the other thing I was going to note, just based on having watched the last couple of years of budgets, is the areas that need park acreage more desperately than some are some of the more expensive areas in the city, unfortunately, in terms of land cost. And so that's another challenge, is even though impact fee funds do come in, and there's money that's sitting there, it's hard to find good acreage in, you know, that area.
What happened with Pioneer Park, sorry, last year, and that's why we're doing some improvements or creating some spaces there.
So I think to both of those points, one of the things I think we, as a council, can do, or individual council members, and I would encourage us to work, obviously, with public services on this, is to reach out to community members. You know, the, I can't ever remember the name of the park, but it's up in the alphabet area of my district.
Imperial.
Yes. The community came together and raised the money for their own shade structure, because in reality, that park has no trees, like, right where you would want to sit and do something. And they came together, and I think that, I don't know if we matched, if the city, or it was fully funded by them. They might have done a CIP.
There was a community in that, for that Imperial Park, it was a steakhouse that went away, I believe it was a steakhouse. And the community secured the land donation, and then impact fees were utilized to develop the park.
But, and that was very community-driven. My point being that we, I think, have an opportunity to engage with our community members to say that these different amenities that our parks need, let's come together. And not every, yes, I recognize that that area of my district is probably more affluent than other areas within our city and may have different resources. But there are other things that community members, and we as community leaders, can encourage community members to do. As many of you know, I love Detroit, and Detroit is a prime example of taking an area that had been blighted before, the entire neighborhood had basically moved out, so there were abandoned houses that ended up burning down on their own, which is a problem in Detroit. And they, the community came together and without any outside dollars created a park, just with the city's help, just with their council members' help, where, you know, maybe there was cans of paint that were donated, and they created this beautiful, like, brick wall that everybody painted on, and all of these things. And so I think as we're looking at, as Jen mentioned, it's hard to find the money to put in the amenity. But I think we have an opportunity to engage with our community members to say, what is it that you want? And how can we help without just writing a check? How can we actually engage in doing something for these parks and for these amenities?
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
I agree with the ideas. I also think that we need to fundamentally look at our parks. I mean, we can nickel and dime this as much as we can, but I mean, I'm looking at 3.5 acres per 1,000, and we're losing ground today. I mean, this was done 2017 to 19, so April of last year is when this is finished. And our population growth since then has been, anybody ever sense in the last year? I don't know. I mean, we're not, we're not at this at this point. We're less than this at this point.
Yeah.
I think we need to look at our open space. I think the fleet block should be on the discussion right now for Central City. I think that we should be looking at every possible avenue. But bigger than that, I think, I'm going to say it again, I think we need to look at how we're funding managing our parks. I don't think our current funding plans are going to do it, period. Short of raising taxes or something else like that, I think we've got to figure out, how do we manage this public amenity for the public to understand it, to be invested in it, both personally, but also maybe closer to what the library is seen as? People are more likely to pay more for the library. They see it as a direct benefit. I'm not sure we treat the parks the same way. So I'll advocate hard for us to fund, if we need, studies or planning to figure out, is there a way to help parks to manage these things and to grow with our city? I'd just like to start this year immediately. I mean, we funded a study of Washington Square and Library Square last year, two years ago?
I think it was last year.
Last year. To figure out, this is already a public amenity downtown. Is there a way to look at it and say, could it be a park of some sort? A downtown amenity? Are there ways we can look at the rest of the city and our public assets, our land, our buildings, and figure out? Highest and best use may not be mixed-use development some places. It might be parks and open space. I think that's maybe the way we need to look at things, especially downtown. I want to make money for the city on our assets, but I think for us to continue to grow, we need developers to be able to sell stuff like that with parks attached to it. So I would support this budget cycle if the mayor is conducive to it. Funding, a look at our parks, Parks Department, our management, maintenance, governance, the whole deal, and figure out if at all, as one, we can figure out an improved way to help out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If we can come back to where Andrew Johnston jumped in front of my turn.
Yes, thank you.
Because he was, he kind of went down my rabbit hole, which was to bring up the Washington Square and the library, something that we've talked about, making it a downtown park. I thought it was interesting, and I don't know if it was in this exact document, that it talked about how our park space is changing, right? It's evolving. It's no longer, you know, the playground equipment, you know, let's all go play tennis. That's not what it is. It's more of, you know, a gathering spot for people. And we're not investing in that way. And that's something that I think is important that we look at. I think that something that's interesting is that we're going to be going with the Downtown Alliance this year to Portland. And Portland has a revolving geo-bond for their parks program, right? That automatically comes up, I think it's every five or 10 years, and it just keeps on rolling, that people vote for it, and they continue to roll that. So I think that looking at funding that way is something of an interest as well as looking at funding that. But if you look at where we're looking for nine, we're looking at 94 acres that is suggested, well, that's nine and a half downtown blocks, and that is not going to happen, right? So, especially downtown. So I think that as we look at parks, absolutely, we need to be looking at highest, best use, the way that we're using that park, because there's so many parks that are not being used because they don't have the right use for that park, right? So I'm all in favor of that as well, Andrew, moving forward and looking how we can, we're really not taking advantage of our current parks, right?
Just something to add. I did the math on, Central City is 2.8 versus 3.5 citywide. So even today, if you wanted to bring Central Community up to the citywide standard, it would require 30 acres within Central Community. So just to kind of wrap your head around that and how important it is to take advantage of the opportunities that currently exist.
And if I could just mention too, there's some, a lot of examples of alternative funding options throughout the country that different cities have used, and they vary greatly. They're all over the place. And it just is what works for our city and what the mayor and the council are interested in pursuing. And we'd be happy to talk with you and work with you on any of those strategies.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Dugan.
Probably just piggybacking everybody here, because the parks are good for our health, so they could actually lower some health costs, lower stress, better for our clean air. But is the size of a park, does it have to be an acre, half an acre? I know it doesn't have to be 10 acres, but does an acre park fit that bill? I mean, that's a good-sized park, right, for.
We absolutely have several parks that are an acre. We have parks that are quarter acre.
Right, so we don't have to look like we need to hit 94 acres next year. We've got 94 acres over time. But we've got to look at, we can take small bites. If you take a small, one-acre park, there's a lot for that 10-block radius or five-block radius, right?
Sure, and I think depending on the size of the space, it really provides, what could you include in it? And you need a couple acres to do a multi-use field.
Right, right.
And so depending on how you want that park to function and the role in the community and what those.
But don't step over a one-acre, don't step over a one-acre park because all you think you need to have a three-acre park. But also look at your urban development and your mixed use and say, hey, I know you want this big development here, but you've got to add, you know, an acre park to your proposal, and we'll buy off on it.
Other questions, council members? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fascinating. Fascinating, exciting, and daunting.
I like your adjectives.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, council members, we are moving on to item number six, which is an update on sustainability projects for fiscal year 2019, 2020. And at the table have Sam Owen from the council office, Vicky Bennett from Sustainability, and Debbie Lyons from Sustainability.
Good afternoon.
Yes, thanks for being here.
Well, thanks for having us. I don't know if we can, we'll try and keep it as exciting as parks. It's such a fun, fun topic, and it's all part of sustainability, right? Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The Sustainability Department has been helpfully providing project updates on a number of special projects and initiatives that the council funded out of a disbursement that the department gets from its conjunctive operation of the county landfill. So these projects are not funded by rates from the ratepayers, but from operational dispersments from that facility. And the department provided updates in the end of the first quarter of fiscal year 20, last calendar year, and provided another round of updates in the same format just a couple of months ago. So with that.
Great, so we'll go through and update the projects that we have. And. Great. So we'll go through and update the projects that we have. And as Sam said, as a reminder, this is from the sustainability half of our departments, with the sustainability division. These are the projects that have been, some of them ongoing for a while, some of them were new this year. So we had hoped, we, we were excited, we've got two new project managers. We have Supreet Gill, who, those of you who remember, Bridget Stuckley replaced her and is working on our food policy. And Christopher Thomas, who started in November, he replaced Tyler Poulsen doing our energy work. We had hoped to have them here to brief you, and one had a death in the family and the other is ill. So Debbie and I are going to make sure that we get you all the information you need and can definitely do so, but it's too bad we couldn't be able to introduce you to them at this point in time. So I'll talk about the climate and energy work and would like to start with our municipal renewable energy project. We do have a few slides on that. This is the project that is allowing us to work towards. Our, our actual goal was 50% renewable energy for municipal operations by 2020. The good news is we're going to meet the percentage and well exceed that. As you can see from what we're planning, we're going to hit about 87%, but it won't be until 2022. And a lot of that has to do with the negotiations with the solar developer. But at the same time, we are able to work with a number of other cities and university, couple of ski areas to put in a really large solar development. So it's going to be, you know, we get about 100 million kilowatt-hours a year of, of energy. And that's a, definitely going to be a significant load to put onto the, the regional grid. And when we do say 87%, we are really trying to overshoot this. And that's because that's based on the last complete year numbers that we have, which is for 2019 and, or 2018, I'm sorry. And once we bring our new reclamation, wastewater reclamation facility online and the new airport online, that 87% is going to drop. And we realize that. So we wanted to make sure that we were well, well above what we needed to be and are still considering what we might be able to do for, for their solar in the future with Rocky Mountain Power.
So if 87% is the estimate for 2022-
Yes.
What are we at right now?
Uh, we are at about 15%.
Big jump?
Big jump, yes. Yes, yeah, yeah. And this, this shows the timeline that you can see now. And basically what the process has been is we've been working closely with our utility partner, Rocky Mountain Power, and they're the intermediary. So they, we signed a renewable energy services contract with Rocky Mountain Power. And then they are actually contracting with a third-party provider to do what they call a power purchase agreement. And that will allow them to receive the, the renewable energy on our behalf. We are just about at the end of this. The only thing left to do is for some final negotiations between Rocky Mountain Power and the solar developer. We hope to be able to announce something in the next few weeks is our goal. So that's exciting. We're just about at the point where we will now be then letting them run with it and wait for the solar farm to be developed. The next even more exciting solar and renewable energy procurement-
Chair, before we move on, this was my question. I, I met with Rocky Mountain Power recently and, you know, we were talking about residential solar and, and Councilmember Dugan was there too, and why the net metering and all the pricing structure is the way it is. My question is, if we're looking at making this investment in a solar array, is there gonna be a battery backup? Is that, because I know that that's really the commodity, is being able to store the power that you get from the solar.
Yes, that's something that is finally getting to the point where it's cost-effective. There won't be for this facility, because there's still enough excess. And we, we have enough of a, of non-renewable that we can balance it against. We are starting to look at some of the battery backup opportunities, for example, at the public service, uh, public safety building. And we're working with them to do some numbers to see if we could provide them with, you know, some cost-effective battery. We are a bit concerned with some of the things that are coming out right now that are being filed at the Public Service Commission. When we filed this, this project with Rocky Mountain Power and at the Public Service Commission, we were essentially the last project that came in with the old avoided cost rate. So that's the cost that Rocky Mountain pays us for the solar that we're creating. They're saying this is how much cost they avoid. They're in the process right now of talking about dropping that to an extremely low amount. I mean, lower than almost anywhere else in the nation. And there's a lot of concern from our solar industry, a lot of the environmental groups, and we're not sure really where that number comes from. That's something we will be following closely this year, because that will affect residents who want to have solar. There's some concern about what's going on with the net metering program. And it could also affect this next large municipal utility scale.
I guess my follow-up question is to that, and I'm sure you'll get into that, is that a few years ago, we looked at generator, backup generators for city buildings. And to me, it just seems like, are we still going that route with backup generators? Are we now assessing that we're past that point, looking at battery storage?
I think we're still at the point where the, the answer to that is both, because battery storage is just now getting to the point where it's cost-effective. But there may still be some needs for generators. And, you know, it would really depend on the use and the, the needs. Yeah. We would love to go away from them, though. Yep. Okay, the second project is our large municipal utility-scale solar procurement proj- project. This is the one that was based from last year's House Bill 411 that we led, getting passed at the legislature, that allows us to work with our, with Rocky Mountain Power to have renewable energy for our entire community. So not just our municipality, but purchase it on behalf, or make it allowed so that we can work with them, so it would be provided to all of our residents and businesses. The first thing that was required as part of that is that we would have a resolution, which you have passed with our, and you and the mayor have passed as a joint resolution, 100% renewable goal by 2030. They also opened it up to any other city that would be interested. And they had any other city which did want this and, and a couple of counties would have to have had it passed by the end of 2019. To our shock and awe, 23 communities in Utah have passed that resolution. And this is not what you would think of just as, you know, where I was saying, oh, these are the progressive communities. And, I mean, these are communities like Oakley and Kearns. And, you know, some of them obviously have much larger power use than others. But just the fact that this is showing that we are looking at 23 of the state's total electric consumption, if this goes through, with all 23 communities. Now, there's a lot to happen before this actually gets there. But to realize that 23% of the state's load, 37% of Rocky Mountain Power's total load in this, in the state. So we are absolutely thrilled and now are leading this group of communities through the details. So just to give you an idea of what, we, we tried to simplify it, and as you can see, this is what we're calling simplified. And I think the easiest way-
Would you mind clarifying communities? Are we talking cities and municipalities?
Cities, municipalities, and also some counties.
Okay.
Yes. All the bubbles on this indicate program, and on the top line, indicate program elements that need to be included in our pro, program application that we hope to submit to the Utah Public Service Commission early next year. Now, obviously, all of these states are estimates, but there are so many specifics to this. I'll go into a couple of the next steps in details. But we're working really closely with all 23 communities, because the way the law was written is we need to come to the Public Service Commission, we need to work with the Rocky Mountain Power as a whole. They don't want to be trying to negotiate different terms with everyone. So we're working together to come up with, you know, when we have to, we'll be working with you on this. Is there going to be an inter-local? Will we be looking at, you know, other options to ensure that all of these communities are working together? We're just starting to meet with them. We've had a couple of initial meetings and are now working towards some of the very specific agreements. So the first one is the governance agreement. And that is where we need to create a mechanism for all the participating communities to reach that single joint decision. And we have to decide how we'll share costs. Obviously, there's gonna be some cost to all of this. What do we do when we're looking at potential projects? Will we all agree that if a project is 10, you know, as an example, 10% more than current load or costs, we would automatically say no? You know, these are things that we'd like to have some guidance put together so the communities are all in agreement before we move any further, you know, or that we wouldn't be increasing the cost of energy any more amount, you know, than, say, 3% annually. There could be a lot of different ways that we approach this. We don't know for sure that this would be more expensive than what we're paying for right now. Price of renewables is dropping quite a bit. There will be some administrative costs, but, you know, maybe this will all come out. And, you know, we really are, at this point, starting to investigate. We don't have any cost assumptions done right now. But we thought, you know, if we could at least come up with an agreement where we have some rate caps, where we know that we're not going to expose ourselves any more than, you know, the certain amount, it would give communities and customers confidence to move forward. And what we really wanna do is ensure that we can bring all 23 communities along, if at all possible, because that's gonna triple our impact versus just what Salt Lake City's load would be. We're also simultaneously working on what we're calling the utility agreement. And that's the agreement that the communities then will be working on, once we have agreed on our terms with Rocky Mountain Power, on how we proceed with the program. Talks about, again, who's paying what costs. Again, in legislation, it was very specifically said, any additional costs would be borne by any communities that are part of this. This is not something that can be put across the entire rate base. And so we're working on that one. And then the last thing is low-income plans, which was also part of HB 411, very specifically spelled out. And we were pleased that they put that in, because it's something that I think we are, you know, probably leading on, but we want to ensure that it's very carefully lined out. And it requires each community to develop, to develop a plan for how we handle low-income residents. Doesn't specify exactly what the plan has to cover, but we're going to wanna work with internal city departments, state agencies, community partners, council, to develop a robust engagement plan, so we ensure that we protect vulnerable members of our community, where there's, you know, if there's any hardship because of any potential rate increases, we can start to address how we would do that. And, you know, that could be, again, anything. Are we going to look at assistance? Are we going to look at more energy efficiency programs for them? There's, you know, the sky's the limit. But we will be doing that over the next year also. Do we have any questions on that one, before I move forward? Nope. And of course, we're always open to, if, if you want meetings with, especially with Christopher, and really get into the weeds, happy to do so. We have a, one of our projects is our electrified transportation project. And that is the ongoing operation and maintenance of our EV charging stations. We had some money rebudgeted from last year and have used that at this point for any needed maintenance of these stations. So we did request $25,000 this year, and at this point, we have not used it, but we still have almost half a year to go. Obviously, we hope we don't have to, but the EV charging stations sometimes break at the worst possible moment, and so that's what this funding is for.
Do you have a usage of the EV charging stations?
I, I don't have it with me, but we'd definitely-
That'd be great.
-get that for you. Yes. Yep, happy to. It, they are being used extensively, and of course, if the price is right, so people are very happy to use them. I know that, as an EV driver myself, I'm finding it harder and harder to find a spot to try and get my little boost for... And anything that we don't spend, obviously, will drop to fund balance, and we'll rebudget next year for any needs there. We have the Utah Climate Action Network, money that we contract with Utah Clean Energy for. They actually run that. They support Utah, all of the climate planning throughout the valley. And they are also working with us on Climate Week, and that's $15,000. It's still showing it's not spent, but we will be getting that over to them. We just have to renew a contract. So I think that is the energy projects. So I'll turn it over to Debbie to talk about the food projects that we have going on.
Great. So the first project is the Resident Food Equity Advisors. And just to remind you, the purpose of that was, we were to launch a two-year pilot program where we're engaging residents who are directly experiencing food hardship and learn from them on how we should be approaching food and equity and, and increasing food access. Our program manager, Supreet, has visited personally with over 40 community-based organizations that serve different resident groups and has been busy recruiting members. We had over 50 applicants to serve on that committee, and we've selected 10 so far. And continuing interviews this week, and hopefully by the end of next week, we'll, we'll have firmed up that committee. We've worked with a consultant to develop an eight-month program where we're having monthly meetings with these residents, starting in the first week of April and then going through November. We haven't spent any of the funding yet, but we do expect to see some expenditures in this quarter, as we've been working with this consultant and we're starting to launch these meetings. So we anticipated this being a, a two-year project. We don't expect to expend all of the money before the end of the fiscal year, so we'll come back to you for reallocation of funding to, to continue this program. And part of that project also was to have the advisors help identify a specific project that would help address some of the food insecurity and equity issues within their community. The other food project we have is the Food Economy and Equity Study, and we had requested $65,000 for that. As we've gotten our program, our new program manager on board, she's been working on another federal grant where they've been engaging farmers that supply into our local food economy and, and looking at the barriers that they're experiencing. So we've delayed this study, but we have just recently met with our consultant to put together a scope of work, looking at how we develop some guidance around all of the city programs, whether it's transportation, or housing, or planning, and how we can incorporate or more institutionalize food access and equity in some of the work. I know that the consultant that we're working with has, has worked with other departments, and she's getting a lot of feedback and questions on, like, how do we look at our transportation master plan and incorporate food access into that? So that's the purpose of that study. We, we're just launching that this spring. And so again, we don't anticipate spending that entire budget this fiscal year, so we'll come back again and, and ask for that reallocation. The last item on our project list that we requested funding for was $15,000 to help support farmers' markets and farm stands in Salt Lake City to accept SNAP benefits. The federal government program changed, and so it required these markets and farm stands to upgrade their equipment so that they could accept the SNAP benefits. At this point, it looks like most of the markets and stands have been able to leverage other resources, whether there are other grants, to accept those. And the city funding has not been needed. So I don't anticipate right now having to use that, so we'll just let that fall back into our fund balance. But we'll make sure we include an update in the, in the next quarterly update, if anything changes, as the, as the markets and farm stands get going in this, this spring. So that's, that's it for our food and equity programs. And I would entertain any questions.
Councilmembers?
Council members? Councilmember Rogers?
I guess, all this talk about food had me thinking in regards to food deserts, and with our parks, discussing parks and, you know, how many acres we have per thousand, I'm wondering, has sustainability or can ever looked at our food desert and where we are currently having food deserts in the city?
We work extensively with parks in our community garden program, and we have, Richmond Park is the next community garden that's scheduled to come online, so we're working with them to, and we also have Wasatch Community Gardens under contract, so they do a lot of the community engagement around those, those gardens. So, yes, we, we do work with parks to identify parcels where they might not be, they're sort of underutilized parcels, where we can grow food. The others that are currently sort of in revamp mode are the Canine Greens Community Garden, we're doing some re-engagement of the community around that garden, and then right behind that is the Glendale Urban Farm. We're doing some assessments of those properties to make sure that they're safe and to grow food on, and we'll be developing a garden, a farm there.
My question really isn't about community gardens, it's about grocery stores, right?
Oh, okay.
So, in identifying when we can actually say, oh, we have a real hotspot here where we need to park, well, I mean, I guess, from what I understand, a food desert is if you are, if it's further than a mile away from where you currently live, you know, supermarket.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if we've ever done an assessment like that, so that we can look at doing, because we are looking at community grocery stores, I know that on Fourth West and Third North, Lee's just opened up right across from West High, and that's, that's a huge advantage for the West Side, because we're constantly looking for, you know, better grocery stores and opportunities to, you know, have access to better quality, and I'm just looking at that and what we can do, because it's all around economic development too, but sustainability has a huge part in that. And, the reason why I'm looking at this is because there's the probability of a 500-unit apartment complex going in on Redwood Road and North Temple, and there is no grocery store within, you know, a mile, two mile, possibly three miles.
So, we did a community food assessment back in 2013, 2014, where we looked at exactly that, where those food access issues are, and the resources within the community, where the grocery stores are, where they are not. So, we have that as a baseline, and then this next step of the community food assessment is to look at more of those opportunities, of where we're getting, seeing more development, and where we're going to have to support more people, and do they have access to food, and how they access fresh food. So, that is part of that, second part of the community food assessment.
Because I know that the mayor, in her State of the City last night, spoke about sustainability and how important it was, and when you look at RDA areas, specifically the North Temple area, I mean, it makes a lot of sense in making sure that you're involved in that, in that type of development.
Yeah, thank you.
Following up on that, you know, 500 units on North Temple and Redwood Road and no, and they are experiencing a lot of growth in there, but...
And they're lower-income.
Right, and so that poses a question once again, like, probably, one of the reasons why there's no more supermarkets is because of the type of income and housing that is being built in certain parts of town, and it's a perpetual problem that we've had for, for a long time. But, on a brighter note, Core Kitchen was one of the, one of the projects that came out of that food assessment, and, and that was located in Poplar Grove, where that area, it is a food desert, so that's part of this, this group and the work they've done.
Councilmember Johnson?
Sure, do you have any sense of your metrics that you'd be assessing any of these four initiatives on?
I'm sorry, can you ask that again?
Sorry, the, the metrics by what you're going to assess success in these four, four areas?
The metrics of success in, in resident food equity?
Yeah, so we've got the Equity Advisors, you've got the Equity Study, obviously, the Access, Healthy Food Access Initiative, and then the SNAP program.
So, for the Resident Food Equity Advisors, what that would culminate in is, is a project that would, that prioritized by those advisors, that would increase food access in their area. We would compare it against the community food assessment that was done, and, and make sure that we're addressing that food desert issue within, within those populations. With the study, the, the study would bring about recommendations for each of our departments and programs that we have in the city, sort of a set of standard recommendations that we would look at for each of those departments, so looking at development, economic development, planning, zoning, transportation, housing, things like that. So, the study would be the, the guiding document that departments could use as a tool, as they're developing master plans and programs. With the SNAP expansion, it's, we're just assessing whether that is a need or not, and whether, and if it is a need, then we would help supply the, the equipment that they would need. So, the metric is whether they have the equipment or not, and whether we would need to help them secure that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling, I mean, I don't, I don't have answers, let's be honest, I can ask any question I want, but I don't know how to fix stuff. I mean, James is right, I, we run into an issue of a small Smith's in the middle of Poplar Grove, it's, we got two other supermarkets somewhat close, but there's not much competition, they don't have to reflect the neighborhood in any way.
Right.
And, we struggle with a lot of things over there, but one of the things that I worry about is, I don't have an answer to how we help folks actually improve their lives that way, based on time, effort, skills, access to food, those kind of things. So, I'm looking to figure out, how, how do we know we're successful in these things? Because I am, I'm short of being able to poll people and survey everybody, sort of give me a sense of that.
Well, so, the Resident Food Equity Advisors, one of the purposes is to, to learn their stories and learn their barriers, and, and they represent larger groups, right? So, kind of getting all of that feedback from those resident Equity Advisors that are experiencing these barriers, and not guessing, as, as people sitting in our offices, looking at studies, you know, talking to real people about their issues, documenting what those are, and then planning out projects and programs that will address those barriers, and then re-engaging them to see if it's effective.
Yeah, and I, I echoed, I mean, James, and honestly, hit it right on the head, I mean, if we're attracting large grocers or large businesses who are going to do this on a, on a scale that's affordable, affordable food comes in large areas, essentially, at this point, right? Large markets. They're looking at household median income in certain areas, and our housing policy is, is affecting that dramatically. And, I don't want to change our housing policy necessarily, to say, no more affordable housing in North Temple, or Glendale or Poplar Grove, wherever it is, but it's creating a massive dilemma about how do we get those resources in there if the metrics are looking at our income?
I like your question, though, and I think that brings up an opportunity for us, as we're starting to look at this study and work on that, because I think that really puts it clearly to me, that we do need to find a way to measure some baseline as we're working on that, and figure out specifically how to improve, and I can see where we're going to have to do, get a lot of input to figure out what those numbers are, but I think that points us to the idea of, let's make this study a little bit more with some numbers to it, rather than something more of a, like, you know, we, we may say we need more grocery stores in different areas, but that doesn't really point us to exactly how we get there.
Yeah, and that might be an easy metric, I get another grocery store in the, in the area, do we have direct control over that necessarily? Do we incentivize that? I mean, economic development kind of questions come in, the housing questions come in, and I know you're given this sort of narrow piece to try and work on, and that's why I don't, I'm holding you accountable for all the, all these issues and struggles.
Okay.
But, it is sort of, for me, figuring out, is this money being spent in a way that's going to lead to some tangible benefits that we can sort of point to and say, yes, there's something that's got some truth here, some potential, we can keep growing on that piece. If we don't, I end up with a couple more community gardens, which are wonderful, but they don't come close to scratching the surface of our need kind of thing in the neighborhood, so, it's a tricky balance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your efforts, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, let's move on to our item number seven, which is a franchise agreements 101 overview, we are running quite a bit behind, so, I would like to...
Is that a problem?
Uh, yeah, it is, yeah. So, if we could have Ben Ludkey, Carol Luke, Katie Lewis, and I...
Can we take a tiny break?
Can't, you, all right, five minutes though, please, please.
It's an official break or unofficial?
Unofficial, but we're not going to do it one later, we're not going to do it for, so, go now if you must.
Can we brainstorm, because this is, we're not going to...
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be tomorrow.
Possible.
I'm going to just fill up my water right here, I'm, I'm right here.
Okay.
No problem.
All right.
Last second, Sam.
That's, that's my philosophy too.
Yay. So, we have, we have a hard stop point of 6:15, where we have to have our closed session briefing, so we're going to have to condense a lot of these, otherwise, we're not going to have adequate time for our retreat follow-up, so, if you could keep that in mind with your comments, going through these last couple of items.
We can always schedule small group meetings.
We can, yes, we can always schedule small group meetings if you have more questions.
Be more careful.
I'm actually talking to you specifically, even though I'm looking the other way. And, you're not, you're not allowed to say metrics or measurables for the rest of the day. Okay. Okay, sorry, go right ahead.
So, good afternoon, I'm Kimber Lee Chitres from the City Attorney's Office, I'm going to just jump into the franchise 101, it's a high-level sort of explanation as to what our franchise agreements do in the city. The type of franchise we're talking about is a, franchise agreement's a contract that a government grants a special privilege to a company, to allow that company or entity to use the government's property. So, specifically in this case, we're talking about cities, the city granting franchises or franchise, entering into franchise agreements, to allow utility providers to use the right-of-way. So, it allows the company to do things you otherwise couldn't do in the public right-of-way, so that's how they get to build poles, string wires, install underground pipes or conduits. The franchise gives like a blanket, non-exclusive permission, basically, to locate anywhere within the city's right-of-way, and then those locations are narrowed down through the city's permitting processes. It's typically used for companies that are providing some kind of benefit to the public. So, we're talking about railroads, power companies, gas companies, telecommunications, cable or video services, water and sewer. Their process in the city, it's typically granted by an ordinance, that's our historic practice, as well as a national practice. The state code does not give us a lot of direction, generally speaking, it says that the cities have the right to control their property, and it specifically requires an ordinance to give a railroad franchise. The city code allows that ordinances are how you encumber city property, or how, so, so that's why we use ordinances every time one of these comes before you, and then the administration negotiates the contracts within the parameters of the ordinance, and then brings them to you. So, the city is compensated for use of the right-of-way, that compensation is frequently set by the state, so, if it's an energy supplier, the state sets a municipal energy sales and use tax. If it is a video services provider, there is a multi-channel video or audio service tax act, which is a federal law. If it's a telecom, there's the Municipal Telecommunications License Tax Act, which is a state law. Small cell facilities, as many of you remember from our extensive discussions in the last two years, they have some more limited fees, but they can also charge a fee for those... Their process in the city, it's typically granted by an ordinance, that's our historic practice as well as a national practice. The state code does not give us a lot of direction, generally speaking. It says that the cities have the right to control their property. And it specifically requires an ordinance to give a railroad franchise. The city code allows that ordinances are how you encumber city property or how, so, so that's why we use ordinances every time one of these comes before you. And then the administration negotiates the contracts within the parameters of the ordinance and then brings them to you. So the city is compensated for use of the right-of-way. That compensation is frequently set by the state. So if it's an energy supplier, the state sets a municipal energy sales and use tax. If it is a video services provider, there is a multi-channel video or audio service tax act, which is a federal law. If it's a telecom, there's the municipal telecommunications license tax act, which is a state law. Small cell facilities, as many of you remember from our extensive discussions in the last two years, they have some more limited fees, but they can also charge a fee for those. And then other uses of the right-of-way are usually charged by like a fair market value or a linear foot cost. So if you weren't subject to a tax, like some telecommunications companies might not be subject to the tax because the kind of service they're providing, they still pay through a city ordinance that says you pay like a linear charge per foot. There are some regulations from the federal government that overlay this, and this is a really high-level discussion. But there are certain policy decisions that are made for us by the federal government. So for example, we can't discriminate or treat differently, different providers of the same or similar services. So we can't put certain rules on one telecommunications provider that we don't put on others. A lot of times those rules go to any user in the right-of-way or any utility provider in the right-of-way. As far as telecommunications go, we cannot prohibit installation in the right-of-way, as you know, again, from the small cells. Cable, they say we can't grant an exclusive franchise. So we have some high level, and there's so much to know there, but those are some high-level points from federal regulations. Our city code generally addresses franchises as well, although not very comprehensively. It does say we can require a franchise agreement before you install anything in the right-of-way. You still have to get the relevant city permits, for example, a permit to work in the right-of-way, which is essentially the construction permit, or maybe an electrical permit if you're running electrical power lines. There is a franchise code that really governs assignments and railroads. There's video services code that, that governs what used to be cable, but it also governs some aspects of telecom franchises. We use a form franchise agreement, so when things come to you, they, they're based on a form. It's been used for many years, it's kind of generally accepted, accepted provisions. Just so you know, the main, the main franchises we have right now is we do have a gas franchise with Dominion Energy that is currently being renegotiated. We have a current Rocky Mountain Power franchise. We have a video services franchise with Comcast. We have many, many telecommunications franchises because every fiber provider has to get a telecom franchise. And then we have many railroad franchises, most of them historic. I'm going pretty fast, are there any questions so far? Okay, we're going high level. So we would recommend some changes to the city code because like I said, there's not really a comprehensive scheme for franchises. And we've also often had questions come up from you and as we're negotiating them about how different things are handled. So we have talked about moving to a comprehensive franchise section where we might pull in, like we did with small cells, pull in a lot of the provisions that would otherwise go in an agreement and put those in city codes. So basically it's codified that if you want to use the right-of-way, you need a franchise agreement and these provisions apply, like insurance, indemnity, bonding, remedies for violations has been a big discussion. Relocating and undergrounding are pretty common discussions with engineering as to who pays for those, and things like that. So we would try to simplify the agreement, and then we also might consider simplifying the process as to how you consider these ordinances. Even though we bring them generally on a form, it seems like every time, they raise a lot of questions. So we want to make you comfortable with them and keep your time used efficiently. That's what I have. Questions?
My only question is what specifically could we do to, what specific changes could we make to ordinances to address that? Is this like a whole, a whole restructuring of the way that our franchise ordinance is? Or is this something that we could accomplish with just making minor changes to our existing ordinance?
So the existing ordinance right now is really short and really incomplete.
Okay.
Um, so it would be something like building it out to make it clear when franchises are required, what the process is for all franchises, and what the general terms would be. So it might look something like our small cell wireless facilities ordinance, but applicable more generally to use of the right-of-way.
Okay. And is there, you said that, that it's a little bit different in terms of what we can do for a small cell versus franchises, but did you mean that, do we have more freedom under the state law for franchises? Or do you mean that the difference in the laws that we have a more built-out ordinance for one and not the other?
So we definitely have a more built-out ordinance for small cells, and right now there's more, as a city, we are more restricted on what we can do and what we can consider with small cells than other kinds of franchises. But the franchise, the way we handle franchises right now is based a lot on practice and not really city code.
Okay.
Because it's just not in the city code.
And what's the reason for that?
I don't know, I think it's got added to historically and never, like, when they've made changes, there were some changes made, I think in 2015. But like, for example, the changes for the process for adopting an ordinance for all franchises is in the video services franchise provision. So there's just some weird...
Are we as constrained by state and federal law in franchises as we are in a small cell wireless?
Yes and no. The difference with a lot of our franchises, like if you're talking about a gas or power, they're already in the right-of-way. We need their service, and they have a lot of clout. But there are also some pretty established principles that go along with those franchises. So I don't think, we're, we're not as, right now the FCC has made small cells in particular like very widely required in a lot of ways and constrained us. We have a lot of the same constraints with the other kinds of franchises, but that probably goes around along with our current practice. So I don't think we need to change a lot of our current approach to franchises. We just don't have any city code guidance on them.
Okay.
We've been waiting for Kimberly to get here and give us that guidance.
Great.
That's a tough one.
Okay. Council members, questions? So I'm, I'm combining this with the item number eight, which is the teleport communications. So do we want to have that franchisor join us up here? Or actually, no. This is, this is just, this is...
I've invited Shelley Fainan to join us, she's the real property manager.
Sorry, there was an extra comma here, it was kind of throwing me off. Shelley Fainan, the real property manager, and we don't have the, we don't have the franchiser here, right, from...
No.
Okay.
They, the person I was communicating with is out of state.
Oh, okay. Okay, so what else can you, what can you tell us about this specific franchise agreement?
So Teleport is actually renewing their agreement. It expired January of 2019. And so they would like to renew for another 10 years. They fall under the telecommunications company, which is basically allowing them to place, maintain their facilities in the right-of-way.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about teleport communications franchise specifically? Okay. All right, I get a lot of resident feedback about this, so I, I, but, I'll, I'll get you their names. Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we are going to, no. No, there will be no break. So we'll move on to item 10, which is the draft foothills trail system master plan follow-up. We have Allison Roland from council staff at the table. Can we also have Kristen Riker and Louis Cogan?
Looks like Kristen may stay in her seat.
Kristen, you could stay there, yeah.
Louis has all the answers, I believe.
If you want to come up here, whatever.
So just by way of background for council members, the chair requested this, that Louis come back and address some of the questions that the public asked during the public hearing for the foothill trails master plan. Foothills Trail System Master Plan. So, so we just plan to, well, rather, I hope Louis will just go over those responses so that you can ask any follow-up questions you may have.
Great.
Okay. Perfect, so if that sounds good, I will just go through them, I'm not going to read the responses I prepared, I'll just give a summary, a quick summary.
If I could just, sorry, interrupt one more time, just so council members know, staff has also reached out to all of the members of the public who left their information so that they will have these written answers sent directly to them, to their email addresses.
Great. All right. Thank you, council members and Mr. Chair. The first of the, the questions from the public was as to whether creating switchbacks in trails up the, up some of the prominent peaks and, and knobs in the foothills above the city would create very visible scars and impair the scenery. And, and they were also wondering if creating these accessible trails up these, these peaks would encourage more off-trail use by mountain bikers. And a response to those concerns is that, first of all, we, we feel strongly that the creation of these contouring trails, crossing the hillsides at sustainable grades will actually ultimately be less visible as soon as one to two years after trail construction as the kind of earth that's been disturbed on the downhill side of the trail has a chance to re-vegetate. Most of these trails should essentially be invisible from the valley, except that you might be able to see people walking or biking on them. We're also, we fully intend to avoid the use of tight constrained switchbacks everywhere that we can. There are probably one or two locations where property constraints are such that we may have to employ some tight switchbacks, but for the most part, these trails will, will be following natural contours of the land, and I think that will make them much less visible than a lot of the existing fall line trails that predominantly occur on ridge lines throughout the foothills. With regard to encouraging or facilitating a lot of more off-trail use by mountain bikers, I, I really don't think that's going to be the case. We feel like we, we looked very carefully in this plan at making sure that if we're giving people a route up something, we're also giving them a route down that is fun, enjoyable, and attractive. And we'll make every attempt to design the, the final layout of these trails in such a way that discourages people from short-cutting, switchbacking, or taking off-trail routes.
Councilmember Johnston?
I don't want to interrupt you if you're not done.
Well, I, I thought I'd provide an opportunity to ask questions about these as I go.
I said a couple more questions, but you'll probably get to those in a second, so I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, great. The, the next issue raised was a concern that the planned Mount Wire Trail or Trails would have the potential to affect water quality in Emigration Canyon, particularly if dogs are permitted on the trail. And if so, how the problem might be mitigated. And our, our response to that is basically that, A, people who fail to pick up after their dogs, does create a, a water quality issue, it does currently create that issue throughout the foothills. And that's, that's something that we, we certainly hope to address through an ongoing campaign to educate people about the importance of picking up after their dogs. And we'd also ideally like to see, and we intend to create improved consistent signage throughout the foothills, encouraging people to do that. And ultimately, as is recommended in the plan, we'd, we'd love to see some form of a trail ranger or ranger program where there's, there's some form of enforcement presence. I think simply the existence or the knowledge that there is a ranger somewhere in the foothills would have a very significant impact on people's willingness to follow the rules and pick up after their pet. That being said, I think that the, the likelihood that the creation of the proposed trail at Mount Wire would have a noticeable impact on water quality in Emigration Canyon is extremely slim. That, that trail is, quickly climbs very high up on the ridge line, or up on the hillside, and immediately moves far away from any homes in the canyon. There, there is an existing social trail along the, the pipeline that runs above many homes through the canyon, right there on the north side, that sees a fair amount of traffic. And I, I would expect that any impacts to water quality related to dog feces that aren't picked up are going to be much, much higher coming off of that trail than something that's a mile up on the ridge line with no source of water.
Okay. Go ahead and keep, sorry.
Continue. There was another question from representatives from the North Cove subdivision who were concerned about the identification of a, a formal system trail in the trails plan that utilized the utility road on city property and dead-ended into, dead-ended into the North Cove subdivision. That, that trail was identified on the plan because we had identified it as an, as an important access route to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail from all the, for all the residents of the North Cove subdivision. We had an opportunity on Friday to have a conversation with some representatives of that community group, and I think that they felt satisfied. We had, we had suggested that for the final version of the trail plan, we simply place an icon or some, some form of text in the maps in the plan document specifying that there is no public outlet via the North Cove subdivision. And that community group also felt like they would like to see a, a larger, more visible or prominent sign identifying users of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail that there's no public outlet, and we felt like that was appropriate as well.
So they have their own access for that, that community essentially, but no one else can go into the community?
There's, essentially, there's, there's public, there's Salt Lake City property owned by public utilities that, that serves a, a water reservoir, buried water, water reservoir. So it is actually, technically, the public would be allowed to walk down the access road, but then as soon as they hit this, that street in the North Cove subdivision, it's a private street, and there's no access within that subdivision. So yes, that essentially, it's essentially the case. But I, but I think there, you know, there, there are a number of subdivisions across the foothills where, you know, we, we recognize that there's a lot of people in these neighborhoods, and we want them to have the ability to access the trail system, you know, in the most direct form possible. It doesn't make sense to have people in North Cove have to get in their cars and drive all the way around to City Creek to access the trail system if they're right there already.
But if, so if public users use the trail and disregard the sign, they'll just have to go down, and then they'll get down to the end of the street and find that they're gated in, so then they'll have to go back and go back out their, the public way.
This is not your concern necessarily, but it's a private street, is that right? And so it's gated off access? Do we do utilities up there, anybody?
Say again?
Do we do the utilities for that street?
Well, I shouldn't, I'm, I'm, I'm not certain. I know there's a public, I know there's a public utilities water facility up there.
Yeah. Anyway, I mean, this is a separate conversation about private streets and public utilities and private or public access. But anyway, we're building an amenity for that community to get on and off that other people can't use.
Actually, the city would not be building a new amenity, this is something that already exists, so it was...
Just the road itself? There wouldn't be improvements on that road to go in and out?
No.
We're not proposing any.
No improvements, it's just, it's just the way it worked out.
Okay. All right.
All right. There was another question about the planned trail on the west side of City Creek Canyon, and whether that trail would be likely to increase fire danger or potentially be an aid to firefighters in case a fire does happen. We feel like in that, in that particular case and in many other cases where we're, we're constructing trails right along the wildland urban interface, we feel like in general, these trails would actually provide a net benefit in terms of fire safety or fire hazard. actually provide a net benefit in terms of fire safety or fire hazard for three reasons. One is that in a lot of areas, there currently is very limited or no easy access for firefighters who might be trying to get in to fight a fire on foot, and obviously, providing a trail provides such a route. Second, these proposed trails could serve as fire breaks in case a fire does occur, and we've already seen that happen in the case of the Victory Road Hell Canyon Trail that was constructed back in 2017, 2018. In summer of 2018, a fire broke out on an adjoining property, and that trail did, in fact, prevent the fire from moving further north and up slope beyond Columbus Court. Finally, based on what we have observed over the past number of years, one of the most significant emerging causes of wildfire in the Wildland Urban Interface in the foothills is from campfires often associated with transient camps. And we have seen that where we have constructed trails and then basically put the public's eyes on a previously hidden or secluded area, that tends to strongly discourage homeless encampments. And that is very much the situation along the route of this proposed City Creek, North City Creek Trail. There's a lot of hiding spots, and there's a very established pattern of camping and campfires, and the proposed trail would basically put almost all of those areas within easy view of this public trail, which we think would discourage camping. Another point that was brought up, a federal point resident expressed concern about parking and safety at the Popperton Park Trailhead, and also, they were concerned about visibility of proposed mountain bike trails in the Popperton Preserve, and they're wondering if there are ways to address those issues. And we definitely feel like there are ways to address those issues. The council has already approved funding for a proposed CIP project in our last CIP funding cycle, which will allow us to hire a consultant and engage communities in detailed design and cost estimates for seven major trailheads, including the one at Popperton, across the foothills. And we do absolutely intend to look at all those things: parking, traffic speeds, safety for users, and for neighborhood residents. And in that particular case, we absolutely intend to engage the Federal Point Homeowners' Association in that design process. Furthermore, there was a comparison that was drawn between the I Street Bike Jump Park and what we're proposing at Popperton, but we feel this is actually a pretty different scenario. The I Street Bike Jump Park is a pretty unique feature that is user-built and user-maintained with some limited oversight from the city. In the case of what we're proposing at Popperton, it's a formal network of trails, including walking trails and biking trails, that would be constructed by the city, maintained by the city and our partners, and we would not be allowing any additional rogue trail building or jump building to occur in that site. Final point that was brought up. A concern was raised in the public hearing about the potential for adaptive use and accessibility for people with special needs, what measures have been taken and what additional ones can be taken to provide better access. This is absolutely something that has been from the get-go of significant concern and interest to us in developing the foothill trail system plan. There are a number of challenges with developing trails in our portion of the foothills and making those trails accessible, primarily the steepness of slopes and a lot of the areas that we're looking at will make it virtually impossible to create trails that are always at very low grades. And so in many places, we anticipate trails will be constructed at grades approaching 10%. But there are also a lot of opportunities that we've identified in every portion of the plan area to create trails that are built specifically to accommodate adaptive cycles. And in developing the plan, we've worked with a number of stakeholders, including the National Ability Center, a number of representatives from the various hospitals based up at the University of Utah Healthcare Campus, the Mayor's Accessibility Advisory Council, and others, to try to understand how we can improve accessibility for people with special needs. And I think we have come to understand that there are many different ways to do that, and we should not assume that simply because we can't make a particular trail or trailhead ADA-compatible doesn't mean that there aren't other things we can still do to improve accessibility. And so we are looking at everything from information that would be provided online before someone ever gets to a trail or trailhead, to information that would be provided at a trailhead and on wayfinding signage along the trail system to help people navigate that. All of the trailhead and access point proposals that are contained in the plan include recommendations for accessible parking and curb cuts. And we fully intend, as we move forward with trail construction of a number of projects, to engage all of our adaptive use stakeholders in helping us make trail systems that work for them and that are really fun to use. We've been looking at a couple of trails up in Round Valley as great examples. Obviously, the slopes are much more gradual in Round Valley, and so they have more terrain to work with. But we're looking at Red Butte Canyon, the Popperton Preserve area, and the Bonneville Shoreline Preserve area as three locations in the south, central, and north area where we think there's substantial opportunity to create adaptive-friendly trails.
Councilmember Johnston?
Do you have any sense of what a target might be for, I don't know, the metric, percentage of trails, miles or kilometers of trails, whatever it is, to sort of know we're doing a fair amount of adaptive sort of accessibility that way? Any sense of that?
I don't right now. The three sites that we're looking at would be pretty limited. We're probably talking about somewhere between five to eight miles of trail total out of a, you know, 100-mile trail system. But I think there, as we get into these construction projects and actually get professional trail builders looking at some of these sites, I think we'll start to get a sense of whether it's possible to make more of the trails friendly to adaptive cycles as we go.
I'd be very interested in sort of seeing the outcomes once you get in deeper into this process.
Yeah.
I know it's hard to sort of guess right now.
Say again?
It's hard to guess right now, I'm assuming.
It is hard to guess, but, you know, I think I'm going to say roughly 5% to 10%, where we'd like to, you know, push that towards at least 10%.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be strongly supportive of any efforts to increase that as much as we can. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, great. I think that, yeah, I think that covers everything, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, this is set for action tonight on the formal agenda, so if you have any other questions, yes, speak now. Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we are back on time-ish. Well, good news is, we still got a full hour for our council retreat follow-up, so bad news is that we're still not quite on time. No. So, yeah, if you have to take a bathroom break, we'll just skip your priorities, so, sorry. Okay, so we have at the table LaHua, and then I think we're going to have Rachel join us from the administration, if you'd like. Rachel Otto. Yes. Mayor, you're also welcome to join the table if you'd like, but...
Sorry.
All right.
The Carlton chair.
All right, you want to, LaHua, you want to take us through this?
I'm bringing up the file that was in your packets. And basically, we were hoping, I'll tell you a little bit about what the staff process was, and then we can go through each of these so that council members can provide us any corrections if we didn't capture your item correctly. And then we'll also be asking on each of the items, so one, whether we got it correct according to what council members raised during your retreat discussion, and then also identify with the help of the administration whether they might already have some work in progress related to the topic, because that will help us identify what the next step is for each of the items. If there is work either being done or that they're planning on doing, then that might be an item that would make the most sense for us to coordinate a little bit more with the mayor and her administration and to identify an upcoming briefing. And if there is not already work being done in the administration, and it's something that maybe needs a little bit more discussion and scoping, then we can also coordinate on, with you and with the administration, on how, what that conversation looks like and what would make the most sense.
And just, sorry, just to add on that, that I think then that next step, after all those questions that LaHua just went over are answered, that will help inform what Councilmember Valdemoros was asking about in terms of accountability, to help us figure out, is this something that's like a year-long thing? Is this a two-year-long thing? Is this a two-month thing? And then that way, we can start to figure out what the year looks like, so.
Just to orient you to the list, if that's okay, you'll see that there, we have a couple of items that might have a specific council member in their related district, and then also some items that are listed as combined. The ones that were listed as combined were just things that, as each district, each council member was speaking, there was some overlap and some things that seemed to staff to make sense that could be meshed into one combined project. There are some items that are listed here with individual council members, and those weren't necessarily items that don't have group support, but as the conversation unfolded and the retreat discussion happened, we didn't specifically hear that there was more than one council member interested in that item, and so we just left that as an individual council member item, so that we could check with you today on whether there is more than one council member supporting that topic. And whether there is or isn't, council staff will continue to monitor those items and pursue progress as we can, of course. We also, through the course of combining these and kind of filtering through what council members said during the retreat discussion, there were a couple of policy-topic areas we kind of thought they could be categorized in. Those included budget items, city asset items that really seem to centralize around facilities and parks, development in general, economic development, equity issues. And then I think it was Councilmember Johnston brought up the category of quality of urban living, and as we were sorting through the items that council members brought up, it seemed to, some sub-items to that would be housing and neighborhood preservation, safety issues, and community support issues, and then, of course, our last item of transportation. So if it's okay, I'll just start reading through the project descriptions. The first one is, was brought up by Councilmember Valdemoros regarding the presentations and deliberations during the department annual budgets. And I think that part of what you were talking about was how the information is presented, what historical information is given, and how that information could be more helpful during your council deliberations. I didn't know if that was something that you wanted maybe to happen as a staff conversation, or if you wanted a briefing, or how you...
I think my hope was that we could talk to the administration about having some sort of standard one-pager with the five things that we want to know about that department, how the year went, what programs they had going on, how much it cost, what was, what was actually, what actually happened, what didn't work, and what are the things that I'm looking forward to the next fiscal year, and how much I need to take. Because that, that information to me, it's clearer that way instead of what we have been seeing. And also, it's clear to the constituents as well. When they go online and they look at the budget book, they understand where their tax, where their tax dollars are going for every division, every department, every program. This is how the money is being spent or not spent.
And I think, if I could just add, there's, I think there's two approaches to addressing what you're hopeful for, and I think one is entirely, you know, our legislative staff and our analysis of what the mayor presents, that we can, as a council staff, come up with a way to analyze the information that comes from the administration. The communications team has actually been working really hard on condensing all of that information into sort of easier-to-understand kind of hallway presentations that we haven't really focused on with you guys, and so it was a good kind of helpful reminder to maybe tune that up with you guys. So that's one path. And then I think another path, especially since this is a new administration, not to put work on you guys right away, is to visit with the administration and see if departments are willing and able to kind of present their information in that way. So I think there's two options, and I don't know if you have any.
Thank you. So as you, as you all know, this is my first budget season here with you, so I'm definitely learning as I go. I think Councilmember Valdemoros, a lot of the things that you just mentioned are questions that we're asking already of our department directors as they're forming their budgets. And so it may just be not knowing, again, like how you typically are getting information currently, or how you have gotten it in the past. I think it's maybe just a matter of making sure that you're getting more of what we're already collecting. So this could be a staff conversation between me and Lisa, and Jen, and LaHua, and Cindy to figure out how to get you those things in that quick format. I don't, I don't see that being too difficult or too outside the scope of what we're already prepared to do.
It reminds me of the, was it vision statements? Do you remember those? That Councilmember Lamalfa made departments do to some extent? And then it wasn't very completely adopted, in my opinion, as a council member at the time. And so you're right, that a standardized, like one-page executive summary style approach hasn't been happening, and I think it will probably help us and the departments tell the story of the budget that is coming before you. So I think it would behoove all of us to have that kind of a format. So we'll work, I think Mary Beth probably has some ideas, so we'll take this and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Great, great stuff.
I see a question on that, or thought?
I suppose, yes.
Same metrics. I'm vice chair.
That comes with a lot of power, having been vice chair, I can tell you. You know.
I do know. I feel it very strongly, the heavy, there's no weight on my shoulders. The question for me is, how do we translate it into sort of service delivery stuff? So when I think about what the budget means to me as a citizen, I think through, well, how often does my trash can be picked up? It's once a week, I can rely on that. If we didn't fund it enough, it would be less. So this comes up sort of a couple of years ago, when we found out, like, within a few weeks, maybe a week after the budget was passed?
First?
And we, yeah, we figured out that we weren't watering like a median. There was no money to water the median. And those are the things, sort of, how do we translate that into on-the-ground experience of the citizens in the city? Because the budget is so large and so hard to sort of wrap our heads around, unless I can get it translated down to how many police officers are on my beat in my area per shift, how often is my trash picked up? There's all sorts of metrics like that. Like, what's the response time for our 911 stuff, right? I mean, those are the things that sort of are ways, metrics we can look at, just to figure out what the service levels are. Otherwise, it's hard for me to figure out, this level of the budget for this department translates to this sort of experience of the citizen. That might be a bit too ambitious at this point.
It sounds like it's asking the question, what are we solving for with this change? And if we...
Or what are we, what are we trading? Because there's times when we have trade-offs, and we say, well, this initiative is very critical for us now, but we may not be able to fully fund. We don't always talk about we don't fully fund. That's not the highlight of the budget book, ever. But I think from a council member's perspective, I... But I think from a council member's perspective, I hate to sort of get caught and surprised by, I thought we were funding that at that level and we weren't. Because it was very hard to figure out year to year what that, what the money translated to sometimes.
So if I could just jump in, just quickly, the, we tried an experiment last year that I think went well and can be improved on, to have questions sent to the administration well in advance of the budget being transmitted. And one of the key areas of focus is what service delivery changes will citizens notice as a result of the budget proposal? And then that way, as departments are putting together the budget, they're kind of aware of those trade-offs as they're happening. But, you know, we usually don't ask them until mid-May, and then everything's a crunch, and then it sometimes gets lost in the shuffle. And so we'll be, we'll be sending those questions to the administration in the next week or so to hopefully chew over as, as those budget discussions are happening. And then I think as the years go on, it'll be kind of baked into everyone's thought process of, okay, let's talk honestly and openly about the, you know, because sometimes it's that the question isn't asked, and so no one thinks about it until the tree dies. And then we think, oh, you know.
Well, the funding our future streets is a good example of how we could do this in some ways, where you have to have a map and says, this year, these are the streets we're looking at reconstructing. Two years from now, it's this district sort of thing. It helps people have, well, to put their expectations in the right context. We don't overpromise anything, but we don't also leave them hanging without the information.
Okay, I'll move on to the next item, if that's okay?
Yeah. I have to... I'm just gonna say, based on this, we are going to get through about four more items. So, okay, go.
So the next item was related to city branding. Several council members raised the idea, whether it be neighborhood by neighborhood or citywide, that there could be some effort for city identity and branding. I think it was council member Fowler brought up the idea of branding in a box, and so we tried to combine that into this description item. I don't know if there is a similar or related effort within the administration related to this topic, or if that would be one that would be good for like a later scoping discussion.
Yeah, if you have an answer. I'll, I'll come up with an answer as I'm talking. So as you, as I think you all know, one of the mayor's priorities is to embark on this, on a city rebrand project. So I think we're, we're side-by-side with you on that. This is, there are some initial conversations happening, but this isn't something that we're, we're ready to do like in the next, you know, couple of months. This is a goal that we have to really be able to look at over this next year. Some of this plays into the Arts Council, is they're finishing up their strategic, their strategic plan right now. I think that'll help us inform, you know, what our current capacities are with incorporating public art into new spaces, but this is a bigger effort too. So our, our first goals are to, you know, to meet with Visit Salt Lake and to meet with other partners who care about city rebrand, and to, to start the conversations there.
Yeah, we've talked about a couple of different ways to deploy that kind of, well, obviously, first, there's the scoping of what is the brand-in-the-box model for Salt Lake City, which we haven't begun yet, but we'd love to work together on that. And then where does it reside in the city? And who has the staffing capacity to administer that? Does it become part of CIP? Or is there, might there be opportunities through redevelopment, redevelopment project areas? And so we should, we should probably get together, but I'll tell you that numbers four and 17, which is the city flag, and then the, basically, neighborhood preservation and anti-displacement conversations. I think both of those, the, the city flag certainly applies to the rebranding, city conversation, Salt Lake City conversation, but the, we're looking toward a gentrification mitigation approach. And I think that work will also help us identify where the biggest volatility exists in would have been historically stable neighborhoods. And that might be a cool way for us to focus some of the, the branding and neighborhood identification efforts in supporting communities that are looking at turnover based on market forces and things that, that maybe they didn't want to have happen.
Could I add one other thing, Mr. Chair? I should have mentioned this when I was first talking, but we will be asking you to allocate some resources to do a refresh of our business and cultural districts, to assess the placement of them, and to think about how to make them, you know, more cohesive, more iconic. And so that's, I think that, that fits into this conversation, as does, as does, as, as Mayor Mendenhall just said, the, the equity plan that we'll be discussing in the, in the gentrification mitigation plan. So those are all things that I think factor into this. And, oh, and also, finally, the, the idea that I know is later down on your list here too, but establishing a tech corridor and really doing some place-making around, around tech here too. I think all of that kind of factors into what our overall thoughts are on rebranding the city to make sure that it's reflecting the, the diversity and vibrancy that we see, not just socially, but economically here.
The next item that we had gathered from council member comments during the retreat related to city assets, specifically facilities and parks. And this one, I may have too narrowly combined or described because we weren't sure whether it really, as council members were talking, did you mean facilities, parks, all city-owned land, like any asset that is in the city's inventory? Because I think this would need to be updated a little bit, just to make sure that we included all of that. But really, this had to do with discussions about how are we activating our city facilities and park space? How are we, what I think some council members said was like future-proofing, or like how, what is our funding source for those things? And how would we activate it in a way that meant we were able to take care of those assets long-term and make sure that we were getting the most out of it? And governance and decision-making was another piece of that that was specifically mentioned during the retreat.
So I, yes, I think all of this, and so you're going to update this list, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think, all of this, what you have right now, but also it was about real estate property that is, that the city owns, and with, depending on the economy and how we've been doing, and what we've been doing, and depending on what we need in the city, what we've done before is release some of these properties for another benefit. But we, we thought that maybe we need to review and rethink about the resources. Maybe do long, long-term leases instead of releasing the property for, you know, giving, giving away the property for something else. So that's, I would like that added here. Is that, is that what we talked about, James and all of you?
Yes, I remember.
Yeah, sure. I know, you were next to me, and you were, yes.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think for me, it was two things that overlap. One was just parks, open space, golf. Funding, and that's a governance question and a funding for me. That's based around maintenance, not necessarily growing those. I think the growth, in my view, was tied into what you're talking about with city assets. And I think our, without having a study, but in front of me in my head, the best shot we've got is to take existing city assets and land, buildings, land, and evaluate if those could play into our park and open space discussion, especially in the downtown area or the, the central city area. So that's where they overlap for me, I think. But otherwise, I think those are two separate things, in my, my view. I think the, the, the buildings and land discussion ties into potentially housing because it's an asset. It potentially ties into revenue and city assets because of the way we look at buildings that were, we owned but are using for city departments, and are they, is it the best use if we're gonna, for that asset? That's a separate discussion, in my view, so it gets, I don't want to kind of get it so large that we can't get certain things out. Because I'd love to see a measurable of, parks has a different funding revenue stream or a concept, or governance, or both, and a plan within that to grow to a place where we feel more comfortable, at least for me. I don't think we have nearly enough. But then the second piece is, it ties into those assets in general. So I might separate those, but I'm not sure. Any thoughts?
I think separate or to combine is fine, but I do think what council member Valdemoros brought up is important to have in here, how the city disperses or leases out the city-owned properties for development.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think that the second most valuable thing that we have as a city is our land. And we have a lot of it. And as, as we know, we haven't either itemized and categorized or explored thoroughly the opportunities of the land that we have. But I, a priority for me is maintaining ownership of it and looking at long-term leases as the, the very first and best option if we are going to enter into a public-private partnership, whether that's for activating space on, in a park, or if it is about creating some type of development adjacent to a park in order to sustain the operations and the development of a park. I really appreciated council member Mono's comments about, it isn't, on the parks discussion, that it isn't just about adding more and more acres, when the utilization and the activation of a park is really important. My, my master's project last year was, was looking exactly at these park-to-population ratios around growth. And one of the interesting parts was that there's some cities along the Wasatch Front that have really high park acreage. But when you start to talk to the parks people in those cities, they go, yeah, well, nobody really goes to the park because there's really nothing there. It's kind of just a field, and it barely gets watered. You know, so it isn't just about acres. It's about what we do with it, and that's the harder part. But creating funding mechanisms and ongoing revenue for awesome parks by utilizing the ownership of the land that we have seems like a really good next step. And it might be, it might be, as I mentioned, public-private partnership within the park that is a mechanism for one park, and it might be land near, near another park that is a different use, but that funds operations.
Not unless, yeah.
Are there current plans for the administration that we should be aware of? So don't, we don't go on sort of track on this if...
No, I, I wouldn't say that we have a plan to, to show you today, but there will be, I think that there will be at least two of these conversations coming up this year, and we will work with you very early on as we start to try to shape things up. So I appreciate that this is a combined council.
We just don't know how much time to spend on this end versus what you're already doing and not duplicating those efforts, or, yeah.
I think just in terms of just the, the, I guess, the inventory, the actual figuring out what we have, I think those, there are, there are a couple of different efforts already at work to, to do that categorization. And so as we get further along in that process and have things to share, we'll absolutely make sure that we're going in, in getting you the information that I think you're looking for.
I was just gonna say, we can update this to make sure that it reflects all of these components that council members are mentioning, and then we can make sure that that's in the hands of the administration so that we can move together as opportunities arise. Number four, based on the previous discussion about city branding, I'm thinking we should move that up into that item, so I'll combine those. Number five is kind of under this general policy topic area of development related to discussion of how development affects our many neighborhoods. And that would include something that's been talked about over the years relating to kind of a general review of city ordinances or zoning codes and how that affects the development that the city wants. And that could relate to a tech district or corridor, or that legitimately could be pulled out as a standalone project, because that's kind of large. But this is how we kind of combined it for the purposes of this discussion.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I'm kind of going a little rogue right now, but you guys have known me for long enough. What I've noticed in going through this, and you can see I've kind of made some notes here, is that I'm seeing the pattern of things that sort of really do fall into the more administrative role and then the more council role. And so I kind of did a little preliminary, like, oh, this seems, and more council-ish. And I mean, and what I mean by that, and this may help kind of what we're doing right now, I think, is a lot of these, besides the tech corridor district thing, but if we look at number five, a lot of these things are really policy-question-driven, which I think is, that's where we come in. And knowing that this is a priority, it's something that we've talked about within our council, at least the last couple of years that I've been on the council. And, and so for me, like, looking at how development affects our neighborhoods, well, that's a policy discussion, not just for the council, but for the RDA. Where are our policies? What's going to guide the administration and, and future administrations into funding and budgeting the way that we as a council think that it should be funded? And so I'm, I'm just wondering if it is, as we're kind of going through this, if it isn't a little more helpful to say, well, that seems like a real, like, yay, we're on the same page, administration. Come back to us when you have a plan. And then one of these of like, ooh, this seems like it should go on a future agenda item because it's very policy-directed, in that sort of like splitting that, you know, like, and just for example, the next one, special events, permits, applications, fees. I mean, again, that's a policy discussion we've been having for two years on what are the policies and priorities of the council regarding special events? And how do we need to look at directing, asking administration to direct departments? And then if we go to like, number nine, for example, economic development tools and new opportunities, well, that seems to me more of like, hey, administration, come up with a plan and fill us in when you're ready for a briefing, right? Like, that, I put my categorization for it as admin with council support. Right of the, that seems a lot more administrative planning that then can come back for that follow-up policy discussion. And so, yeah. Is that, Jen wants to jump in real badly?
I just need to jump in, because the special events thing, I think, is a perfect example of the impossibility of divorcing policy from the administrative work that has to happen. And the reason we've had the policy discussion for two years is because we haven't had the administrative, the, the administration has been working on their analysis of all of the detail. And so having the policy discussion without all the detail has felt not quite ripe, right?
And maybe that was a bad example. But I think there's other examples that, just to make...
I think that there's, a lot of these are probably like gray area things, and maybe that's, maybe focusing on the gray area things is not helping the conversation because they're complicated.
I don't, I don't think we're necessarily saying which items are just strictly administrative or strictly council, but where there may already be some sort of work being done or discussion happening in the administration, it would be helpful to, like, bring those world, colliding those worlds so that any council discussion doesn't start a separate duplicate track. So I think you're totally right, and it's hard to tease out those lines sometimes in these, but maybe it's just which of these, and we could, we could go through with the administration in an offline meeting and just identify, what of these could they come back and do a briefing on and set up a better schedule for that rather than this?
I think everything on this, almost everything in here, there's something related to every one of these things that is in process. But it's at like, at what level, is it just a proposal on a single park? Or is it really that it's this special events? And I just, they, like, they are doing an awesome deep dive, and there will be some proposals coming to you? So where are those things? And I think we'd be happy to have that meeting and... So where are those things that I think we'd be happy to have that meeting and do the fine comb through, categorize what's ripe for a broader policy discussion?
I, related to item number five, I would like to add what, what we heard today from Nick Norris that when we talk about like options for city direction and efforts, review of city zones and ordinances, unintended consequences. But I feel like I've been hearing a lot, and maybe this is more about rebranding, but that, I think it's both, that it's hard to, to deal with Salt Lake City. From a, for our business owners and for, for people that, like the applicant that we had today who were pretty much a small business that they, they want to do something that they view as being relatively simple. Obviously, it's not, but are we focusing as a city on the wrong things? Sort of what Nick was alluding to, and is that what, what makes us hard to deal with? Is that what people are talking about when they, when they have that perception? I mean, I don't want to be known as a city that's like easy for developers, that anything that you want to develop is going to be done. But I else, but I, at the same time, don't want to be known as it being a city that, you know, is known for being, yeah, like unnecessarily stringent or stifling and, and so unyielding that we aren't willing to work with small businesses to make accommodations. Do you feel like that fits into what we're talking about in number five, or is that a separate issue?
Well, I think that the review of our ordinances for these unintended consequences and barriers is pretty well nestled in planning.
Yeah.
But this breaking down of silos and the clunkiness or the, you know, the disconnect that small business owners or residents experience when they come in to do business with the city is not necessarily planning, it's building services, but it's, I think it's also part of, I feel like this is like an extension of state of the city because I want to tell you everything that I want to do. But to me, that's a chief innovation officer, and I mean innovation in terms of disruption, positive disruption.
Yeah.
Somebody who can come in and be at, at the mayor's office level to be able to say, now, you've been working by yourself there and you're working by yourself here, and there's this duplication, but most of all, our customers are having this fractured experience, not working with a single company, but working with 16 different departments and divisions. So I think there's both, we're going to have to rely on our departments to unpack the unintended consequences and the hurdles and the contradictions that we have, like, we want to support neighborhoods, but we also have a housing growth plan. And we support economic development and expansion in the city, et cetera, so.
And, and also, and I would love to have that report because if it's, you know, if you came to me and said, if the council funded, you know, one additional person, one additional full-time planner and one additional full-time building services person, we could, you know, change this, this, and this, or we could make this ordinance or this overhaul go faster, like, that is something that I would very eagerly fund or vote to fund.
We're taking notes.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, I agree, I mean, we, we talked about the planning at our retreat, but Nick Norris is sitting here, and we, we have some choices to make. I think from a simplistic vision, if we want to revamp the city code zoning across the board, it's going to take either we drop certain things this year or we add more staff. I'm not really in a place to say what to drop, maybe in a place to say what to add. But I, I agree with the chair, I think that a lot of the things are tied into our ability to plan for them. Whether it's the open space, whether it's the housing, whether it's businesses, small businesses, tech court or wherever it is. So I would personally be in favor of, of prioritizing planning resources now or sooner. With the expected outcome that we would have a citywide neighborhood-specific plan with a lot of the overlays and things we're thinking about included in that, so we have a coherent vision so that it is quicker in two years from now, potentially or three years from now, for folks to come in and very clearly understand the city and know where we go, how you do it, where the expectations are processed. Theoretically, it could be much quicker, so we don't have to review everything. From ADUs to setbacks to whatever it is, it would be clear-cut for a developer to come in or a small business owner to know exactly what they're doing, what's allowed, what's not allowed. But that might be a bit ambitious, I just think I would agree with you.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that I don't, I don't mind handing them a long list of requirements when they come in, but it's being able to know that you can check those things off the list and that the goalposts aren't going to move as you go through the list, which is what I feel like the, a lot of people, from what I, comments that I hear from residents is, it's not that they are afraid of the requirements, it's that one requirement as they go to complete it leads to like five more.
On, I, I don't know which way to go. I know in Vancouver, when we visited there, essentially, they have a design review over everything. Now that requires a ton of staff, but it also means that they get every specific thing answered pretty well. Well, I would look to the administration, the department, to give us a sense of what they would see, but just so we have, I'm willing to spend some money if, on this end.
Yeah.
If we can get those outcomes.
Okay, sorry.
Could I suggest, just for getting through the list?
Yeah.
If you please, that we could just.
I do, please, please.
That we could just read through the descriptions and council members can provide any immediate feedback. And then we would set up a meeting with the administration, do a little bit more of that work to figure out what should have a briefing, what is a council part, what is an administrative part to Councilmember Fowler's point? And then we can come back with that more detailed list.
Great.
So I just want to make sure, though, that we have the descriptions that council members want, so that I have.
Yes.
And we can just read through unless you guys have something that needs to be added. So special events, do the.
I think we got that one, because we talked about it.
We'll be happy to say if you, if you need me.
So the next item is the special events-related one specifically to permits, application fees, and the evaluation of the economic development benefits. To a staff, that means also that once we have that full suite of information, you guys can make some decisions about what should be charged to special events, how they should be handled and treated in the city, and things like that. The next item is the public market. And I might just let that one sit there.
We got, I think we all know what.
The next item, number eight, is an evaluation of the city's economic development loan fund and how it's used to achieve the city's goals. Number nine is also related to economic development regarding general tools and new opportunities. How that might apply to a tech district or corridor using RDA tools outside of private developers, I think was specifically mentioned. This idea of placemaking and then some others more specific tools or activation ideas. Number 10 was the topic of the Jordan River, and I left that as specific to Councilmember Rogers for District One, although I, that, I was hesitant about leaving it that way because I don't think other council members disagree with that being a specific economic development need. So shall I change that to more of a combined item?
Yes, combined, I think.
Yes. Number 11 is also a combined item under the policy area of equity. And that was in general to improve the city's municipal equity index rating. And that would involve taking some actions, many of which are policy-related and/or ordinance updates that would come to the council. But it might also be some, like, non-gender restrooms in all city facilities would clearly be something that's administrative, but it would be something the council could discuss and also invite the budget implications of any of those changes. So that would be a discussion with the administration, does that one sound good? Also, under equity is the idea that was raised about strengthening the Human Rights Commission, and this would be expanding the scope of what they're reviewing and the things that, whether they have a role in reviewing city transmittals before they come to the council office and giving any policy recommendations that they might have. Is that something that should be listed more as a combined item, or was that? No objections? Okay, number 13, also related to equity is renters' defense. And I'll admit that I don't know a whole lot more about what this project would look like, so I was kind of limited in the description I included on that.
It's okay, it's not a, it's, it's, it's an issue that might be like us not staying in our lane, too. So I'm happy to like take that off the list.
But we'll know that that's something that's important to you and council members. The next item, item 14, is about SROs and ADUs. And obviously, there's been some discussion, I think even in some planning magazines lately, about how alleyways can be used and activated through the use of ADUs and their placement. So this might be one that we could meet with Councilmember Valdemaros and understand more what additional work you are hoping for on SROs and ADUs. I know that you had mentioned where they're allowed citywide.
I did mention that one, so maybe we're just waiting on the, on, on an update on that. I mean, maybe the planning division is already working on it. But some of the questions, my constituents were, you know, they're saying, why is it only allowed in certain parts of town? Or it seems like it, maybe it should be a citywide, there should be allowed citywide where there's residential properties. So.
I've been hearing a lot of the same things from constituents.
You too?
Yes, that, that they feel like the limiting SROs to specific geographic areas makes it an unfair burden on certain areas, I've heard that quite a bit.
And I think planning was evaluating that in the latest version of the transmittal and has been working with our staff on a revision based on that feedback. But I don't know where it exactly is in the process yet, so it might be imminent or it might not be, but I will follow up.
Why does it say related to alleys?
There's been some conversation, both in the city and then some articles that were circulated about whether placing an ADU on an alleyway would activate, yeah.
Yeah, and I remember, I remember Councilmember Mano talking about it, okay.
So not limited only to alleys, of course, but just that it could have a touch point also in an alley discussion. Number 15 is the alleyway conversation and about how they could be used as an asset to our city, not only for connections, but also for activating in other ways possibly. Is that something that has a shared council interest with other council members, or?
Yeah, it sounds pretty DOA on the administrative end, so let's just skip it. Yeah.
And then community gardens and park strips was also raised?
That actually was more in the lines of what Councilmember Rogers was bringing up today about food equity throughout the city. And the community gardens was just like a shot in the dark idea. But the actual issue, I think, that I'm interested in is more just like food deserts and, and so that maybe is an equity thing. Yeah, it might be great, but I think it's a piece of a, of a larger discussion about food equity. So, so I think that's, maybe it's not just community gardens and park, I think that's too narrow.
And I think, I think it's part of public market, too.
It could be, yes.
Food equity is, so.
Number 17 was discussed a little bit earlier, but generally, like, how are we tracking and understanding our city's demographic changes and what needs to be preserved and what the city can be doing in order to take that action? Not only in terms of anti-displacement, but also what our housing opportunities are, what the current policy direction is in terms of what to preserve and what to change in terms of housing availability. Surely, this relates to the affordability issues, but there was also quite a bit of discussion that happened during the retreat about the vulnerable populations and what is being done to serve them and make sure that they, their needs are being met. So we've kind of batched that all into this one. Last page, number 18, is several council members raised issues related to the perceptions of crime and safety in various areas of the city, and so how, what is the city doing in response to those issues? We kind of batched the park ranger discussion into this. I think there's more conversation to be had with the current administration and how that, what might be proposed around the park ranger program, but also just generally in how families are feeling in terms of being in the city. Number 19 is the services for communities needing more support. And there were a couple of populations that were specifically mentioned. I think this is one that would be a bit of a new arena for council staff certainly to be a part of, but it would be something several, you know, that there's a lot of interest and hope around. So we've listed that one there, do we have any changes to that language, or is that, okay. The next item, number 20, is a general conversation about traffic calming measures, including exploring creative new options. We've been working with the administration, this will be already a briefing scheduled for March, and so that's coming up. Number 21 is the scooter discussion, several people wanted, mentioned wanting to get this resolved in one way or another. And we're expecting that transmittal sometime within the next week or two, is my understanding. Number 22 are long-term plans related to transit. And this had not only how different parts of our city are being connected, but also how we're planning for how we want transit to look like in the long term and how we're using our, it's obviously very closely related to the transit line expansion discussions that have been made possible by the funding our future sales tax dollars and what we're asking UTA in terms of new services to be provided, which is basically also number 23 there on the list in terms of continued transit expansion. Councilmember Dugan also brought up the issue of foothill traffic, which is a major issue, yeah, through the city. Yep. Councilmember Johnston brought up number 25 about equity. As an equity issue, how fees, like, how tiering our fees is create, how we could change those and how that's an equity issue. And then, of course, the rank choice voting issue, which, as council staff has talked around, rank choice voting, one of the major issues in terms of how, whether or not the city can participate in rank choice voting is whether we have, through the county or another entity, someone who can administer a rank choice voting election. And right now, the last update that we had was that the, the county clerk's office was not set up to do rank choice voting, and so we're pursuing those conversations with them. And then obviously, the, we would have to develop an education campaign around how to make sure people were ready for that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just want to clarify, like, part of the reason I brought this up is only because we were saying, council, that we were going to, last year, we said that we were going to try to.
All right, we were going to try to do something about this because so many residents wanted us to do it for the, for the 2019 municipal elections, and we were like, you know, we, there's nothing we can do. So I'm, I'm more raising this to kind of put it on people's radar, that this was sort of a commitment that we made, understanding that, you know, it's, it is primarily on the, the county clerk. We can't, we can't make them ready to administer that election. I just worry that in 2021, we're going to see even more of a groundswell of public pressure and support for us to implement rank choice voting. Because the, and, and I think a lot of it is that we didn't necessarily say we'll definitely have it up and running for 2021, but we said, we can't do it for 2019 because we have such limited time. And they were like, well, what if you pushed it back a month? Or the, the county clerk extended the deadline for another 60 days. And so I think there's a perception that like, oh, 60 days was not enough, but if we'd had, you know, 120 days, then we might have been able to do it. And now we're going to have had two years, and I think that's where the expectation came from, is not necessarily the words that, saying explicitly, but anyway. So I want that to be on everybody's radar.
Are they working on it?
I don't know, we'll get an update and come back to you.
Basic question, are they?
I think that could be, next step would be information gather with the county, yeah.
So you can take it off the list in terms of a priority, but I do want it to be on everybody's radar. everybody's radar.
Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome work. Thank you for putting this together and reading our minds.
You said a lot of helpful words.
Anybody else have any comments or anything? We have ten whole minutes. If you'd like, I suppose I could reinstate the break. Wait.
Yep.
What were you going to say?
We're flexible now.
Well, yeah, we're still going to do legislative update, but we were going to jam that into the six o'clock hour and do fifteen minutes of leg update and then start closed session at six fifteen. So what would everybody like to do? We could take, we could do the legislative update now because Lynn is here. You want to do that? Okay. Let's just jump, let's jump right in.
I heard break in the night, too.
Thank you for having me. It's good to be with you. Always nice to be with a friendly crowd, which is not my usual these days. But I am pleased to report that things are going, cautiously report that things are going well with the legislature. It's been a strange session for a lot of reasons, but at this stage of the session, usually it's getting really testy and contentious, and it's unusually quiet and calm. So there will still be a fight over the budget, and they're wrestling with that. But I keep waiting for some sort of bombshell to drop that would make our life miserable. So just hope that doesn't happen. But anyway, I can, unless you would like to have specific questions, I was just going to give you sort of an update on sort of the key issues we've been watching, which for some of you may sound like, sound repetitious. It sort of feels repetitious to me. So on the key issues that we've been tracking, the inland port bill was substituted and passed out of the House today. Katie reviewed the substitute bill, so we're all good with the content. And everything looks good there. Senator Escamilla's inland port bill will finally be in committee tomorrow, and it will be interesting to see how the committee responds to her issues there. But it looks like all systems go.
Who's the House sponsor?
Senator Escamilla.
Yeah, for Senator Escamilla.
I thought it was Senator Buxton. That was my...
No, but for the House. I'm sorry.
Oh, for Lou's bill? I don't know that there has been one identified. I mean, I can check quickly, but, okay. I'll check up. The RDA bill, I think I mentioned to you in our communication over the weekend, looks like it is... He is going to take it into committee, I think, tomorrow afternoon or maybe Thursday, and then quietly sort of send it off into the sunset, which is what we expected. We're still working through housing issues, including the request for money. I am cautiously optimistic that we will get some, I say "we," that the state will allocate some money toward affordable housing. I just don't know how much and in which silos that will occur. There was also, finally, the unlawful detainer bill that we have been expecting came out just today. That is House Bill 462, sponsored by Representative Donegan. I have not even had, came out at 408, so I've not even had a chance to look at that yet.
Sorry.
Four, four, sorry, 462. The bill was released at 408. So I haven't had a chance to look at that yet. But we're still monitoring a number of housing bills. One of the significant items that has not yet been resolved, significant items, topics, is that we have four, four and a half bills pending on homelessness. Only Senator Escamilla's bill has moved through committee. All of the other bills are sort of just sitting. And so I expect that those will move quickly. We have talking points from our staff about the changes we would need to each of the four bills that are public, and we will work through those. All of them need some massaging before we would be comfortable with them. And then there's a fifth bill that still has not been made public. What's really going to be interesting here, and I mentioned this in our dialogue, is things were slow at the beginning of the session, then we've had a lot of bills come out. We're getting huge agendas, thirteen items, seventeen items, and they're just flying through, trying to, you know, move through the system. They also have a late floor session tonight because they're getting this huge backlog. And as I mentioned, at least last week, they were telling us there were still 700 undrafted bills. And I have no idea how many of those will even surface. But if even a small fraction of them surface, we're going to get a huge logjam of all these bills. And that's good and bad. Good in the sense that bad things don't happen when you get a logjam. Bad in that it gives legislative leadership more ability than ever to pick and choose which bills they want to pull and prioritize. And so we will need to watch that process very carefully as we come down to the end of the session, because you can't bank on what has moved and what has not moved in terms of what will be pulled out and put at the top of the list. And that happens at the end of the session. So that's sort of the process, place where we are. Transportation, there's been an update here. The Senate Bill 150, which is sort of the main transportation bill, is progressing well, and it looks like it has support, and that will move through the system. There seems to be an ongoing debate and a fair amount of contention about whether or not the state will do a transportation bond. And the piece that I heard relative to a bond is, if there is a bond, it may include as much as three pieces. One would be a bond for state construction transportation projects. I've heard talk of something in the range of $700 million, a significant portion of which might be used for transit, specifically to double-track critical sections of front-runner. But then, in addition to that, there might be two, included in that bond, might be two smaller portions of Salt Lake County transportation money. One being the perennial favorite, our quarter-to-quarter funding, and that's a source of contention as well. And then also, the BNC money that's being reallocated in Senate Bill 150, that delta that's getting moved from Salt Lake County to cities, may end up getting moved into a bond if they do a bond. Yesterday, everybody's on board with the bond. Today, they're off. Who knows what tomorrow will bring? So we are watching that one carefully. And watching to make sure that our interests are reflected in that process. There's a body, police body camera bill, Senate Bill 210, that I think has been, it was carefully negotiated. And so the, both law enforcement and those who, I might say the critics, are, anyway, there seems to be broad support for the bill, and we are supporting that bill as well. So that bill should move well. And many of you, a few of you were there on Monday when the League of Cities and Towns had a hour-plus-long debate about this land use bill, House Bill 273, that would impose, or at least as drafted, would have imposed the possibility of compensatory damages for a land use decision that got reversed by the court. That bill was modified, substituted, to instead provide for the imposition of a penalty if local officials knowingly and intentionally violate their ordinance or state law on land use. We still had significant concern about that bill because it looked like sort of monetizing decisions, cities' decisions. I didn't intend it to happen this way, but I ended up with the enviable, unenviable position of speaking to the bill on Monday, and I was assured that there were other cities that would be there for us, you know? None of which spoke up on Monday. So, anyway, we advocated for our position. I think the league went...
Andrew spoke it all.
Well, yes, but no other city spoke up.
Andrew spoke it all.
No, Andrew spoke it all.
So Houston City.
That Andrew. Anyway, for those of you that were there, you could see what direction that was going. I expressed a number of concerns. I can guarantee you, just on a personal note, the day will come when we can tell people we told you so. But they decided, the decision was that it was better to control the risk and to, in that case, the league voted to endorse the substitute bill as a compromise measure, and that bill sailed out of committee on yesterday afternoon. And I assume it will continue to move through the process fairly quickly. Trying to think what else. I think those are the highlights beyond what I mentioned over the weekend. Do you have questions or questions about anything I've raised or other issues that you want to bring up?
Yes. Well, do other council members have questions first? So I won't be able to be at our legislative subcommittee meeting on Friday, but I did want to say that we might want to, as a city, consider taking a position on HB 449, which is not a city issue, but it's related to transgender youth. So it's just a topic that I work with a lot of residents from Salt Lake City who are transgender, who are minors. This is to create a bill to study whether or not there should be a ban on hormone blockers for transgender youth. I think we should oppose it.
Yeah, that is certainly, you're the policymakers, so just let us know what position you'd like.
Yes, I would be happy to.
I think we oppose it.
Straw poll that we, so just to clarify, that we take a position on HB 449, and take, that the city take a position opposing the bill.
Remind me one more time what this bill does.
Yes, please.
So this bill is to create, would study the use, so, okay, so currently, minors who are under the age of eighteen, who have been diagnosed as transgender and want to pursue, and their parents want to pursue, having hormone blockers, which blocks the signs of them going through puberty, until they reach the age of majority, at which point they could then do hormone replacement therapy. Hormone blockers are not permanent. If you stop taking them, then you, like, automatically, it goes back to as if you hadn't been taking them. They're unblocked. And so this bill was originally to ban that so that parents couldn't make that choice and kids with their children. This is to create a, to study whether they should ban it, which I think, based on the sponsor, the, there's, I feel it will be to try to come up with evidence to support a ban, which I think is wrong. So I think that we should take a position opposing the bill.
I go back to my straw poll and say that I think we should oppose the bill.
Okay. Anybody have feelings or questions?
No, I'm not opposed to the sentiment, but you're talking about politics where you're opposing a bill to study versus to ban, and does it relate directly to the city? And we don't necessarily have a way to figure out if we oppose or promote bills across the board unless they're directly tied to city business.
Yeah, and I recognize that. So I understand if people don't want to do that. So...
So I'm personally not opposed. Personally, I would support your motion, frankly, but I'm at our city business. Is this where we take this body?
I don't know. I mean, my argument would be that it's, we're standing up for our residents, our transgender residents, and saying that, that the laws that already require, I mean, this is a prescription. It has to be under the supervision of a doctor who is duly licensed by the state and is subject to all of the malpractice considerations. And do we think that that's sufficient to protect our residents?
I mean, essentially, all we're doing is creating a statement position, right? I mean, Andrew's right in the fact that I don't know that there's much technically we can do. But we can certainly make a statement that we, as city council members and elected officials of Salt Lake City, don't agree with the bill. Count me. Maybe that's the compromise.
So, I don't know. Councilmember Manno?
I would support opposing the bill.
Okay. Do, well, since Amy's asked for a straw poll, I guess we'll just call for it. Wait, yes.
I don't understand what this bill is about, so I want more clarification because I didn't exactly understand your explanation.
I can tell you what it says on the website about the bill. It says...
I've been trying to look for it, and I can't find it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me find it here. It is, "This bill creates a study of certain medications used in transgender procedures for minors." And then it has a more detailed description. "This bill, one, creates a grant to study the use of certain medications used in transgender procedures for minors. Two, creates a reporting requirement. Three, provides an appropriation. And four, creates a sunset date." So that's the online description of the bill.
What is the sunset date?
Well, let me check. The sunset date is... It has, what it does, the bill has a section, has a section with repeal dates. And I'm guessing, I don't know if those sections it is repealing relate to the study. So that's, but it does have a section of the bill that repeals. Very sad. So I'm not sure that's relevant to your, to this issue. I am perfectly comfortable with whatever direction you want to go on this because you're the policy-setting body, and there's sort of, go ahead.
Can I make an amendment, too?
I don't think we have to follow the rules on straw polls, but yes, I'm happy for you.
So my amendment would be that I just think this is a discussion that we should have. And I think maybe the legislative committee is a better place for it to start. I was just bringing it up because I won't be able to be at the legislative committee.
That sounds great.
Well, and if you feel strongly about it, don't wait till Friday because things will move very fast.
Oh.
It may come up before Friday, so...
I...
Sorry? Which part?
I'd agree with that discussion in the legislative committee.
Okay.
Even if it's beforehand for Friday.
Yeah, so I would say if we, so I would modify the straw poll to say that we want the legislative committee to look at whether the city should take a position against it, not whether the city should take a position in favor of it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I agree with you guys. I think I would oppose something like this, as you have mentioned, but I, it's best if the legislative committee talks about it and has a clear...
Right, because I say this also not having talked with the administration about whether they would like to take a position on it either. So, but I did want to raise it.
Parties at the legislature and advocates and everybody.
Correct, correct. So if, so the straw poll would be, if you're okay with that, Amy, that we ask the legislative committee to take, to look at whether or not the city should publicly oppose the bill.
That's a good one.
All right.
I'm going to do it before Friday, though.
Andrew's in charge of that.
What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, given that you're not going to be here Friday, let me, let me see if I can visit with the sponsor of the bill and gather a little bit of information, which I can share with staff, and then staff can dialogue electronically with the members of the subcommittee, and we can have that sort of informed dialogue.
Thank you.
Great. And then, and I can provide a response, too, if needed.
Well, I can at least find out what the sponsor is intending with the bill, yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I bring up one?
Yes.
Sorry. SB 173 is something that we originally had on the list as supporting, and then when we looked at it, we opposed it. I'm looking, and it's moving quite along. And this is the disrupting legislative or official meetings. The, it has been substituted, there's been one substitution, which took everything, I was concerned about it before when we were in subcommittee last week, because it made disrupting a legislative or official meeting a crime, but only after a couple of times or there was some. Now, it's, I don't even know how you would interpret this, but it simply says, it got shortened to 42 lines, less than, right? So 20 and some odd lines, that it is unlawful for an individual to intentionally disrupt or disturb a meeting. And it's a Class C misdemeanor for the first offense, a Class B misdemeanor for a second offense, and a Class A misdemeanor for the third offense. So, and it is currently, as I'm looking at the status, it, yesterday, it got a fiscal note sent to the sponsor. No, yesterday, it was the Senate circled it. So, I mean, I have real concerns about this.
Yes. Sorry, you were going to say something?
I was just going to say, we already, it's already a Class B misdemeanor to disrupt a legislative meeting. a legislative meeting. And then there's also like a number of other things that people have been charged with. I think that this one is justifiable for us to take a position on as a city because these offenses will go to our justice court and our prosecutor's office. And I think this is a tremendous waste of resources for the city.
And it just feels awfully unconstitutional.
Well, and.
And that.
Well, the.
Thank you.
The, let me pull that up. Let's see.
That's a good point. Yeah. Sort of a, more of a suggestion. Yeah. It's kind of a, like a, you know.
Council, council member, I don't know, they're referring to, they're saying disrupt, disturb, or disorderly conduct. Those are the three sort of terms of art. I'm guessing disorderly conduct is a term of art. Disrupt and disturb probably not.
It is. And it's defined in the criminal code, disorderly conduct, but certainly disrupt and disturb aren't defined in the, in the criminal code or anywhere else in the code that I'm aware of.
So just among us, here's what we've done. And that is that there's.
I disrupt meetings all the time. Look at that.
So we, we have our tracking list, as you know. From that tracking list, there's bills that we actively work and bills that we, we state a position, but we don't actively work. This one has fallen into that latter category because I wasn't getting any traction from the league or anybody, any other interested parties. This appears to be mostly a message bill from the state legislature to certain groups that have been particularly disruptive, more, more so than speaking out or, you know, you know what I mean. So we can, we can switch this from track one to track two and put our lobbyists on it and say, go kill this bill. But you need to know, we'll be alone. It'll just be Salt Lake City doing that. And I'm okay, but we just need to strategically think through.
Can I just point out that they define a meeting also as any committee, task force, or working group, which like, fine, that's one thing, but this is, seems really over the top right now. And so I personally would, and this is my opinion from where this is, as Chris pointed out, there are other things that can, that can happen with somebody who intentionally commits disorderly conduct in a way to, to stop a meeting or whatever. But this is so vague that, and creates the potential of such a chilling effect that I, I would rather we look at saying, really, this needs attention, in my opinion.
And I don't have any problem doing that. I just, I just want to be candid with you about the dynamics.
And here's the, the reason. Because all of these, Salt Lake City may be the, the only city saying that we oppose this, but that makes sense to me because all of these cases are going to go through our prosecutor's office and our justice court. Any inland port disruption is going to go through our justice court. Any legislature disruption is going to go through our justice court. And any meetings of this city, which as far as I'm, as I'm aware, is the only city that this particular group has tried to, to shut down a meeting or has shut down a meeting, and that's going to go through our justice court. So we're not talking about this affecting other communities because their courts are going to be fine. And we run the most, the busiest court in the state.
If something happens in Draper, somebody disrupts a meeting and they get cited, you know, cited, or the police takes them, then it will come to the third district.
No, no, it would go to theirs, but, but that's not happening. The, the bodies that this keeps happening to is us, the legislature, and the inland port board. And all of those come to our justice court. Because they're all located in our city.
Technically, it could happen in an Ogden City Council, right? And then it would go to the Ogden City Justice Court. But I think the point is, on the ground, in its intents and purposes, it, we will see the majority of, of the effects of this.
It's our resources that are going to be put behind enforcing this message bill. And, and unfortunately for other cities like Draper, Ogden, or other examples, they'll only have to choose from one of the other 10 crimes that they could already charge for somebody with as opposed to having 11.
I would encourage us to do the same thing with this. Get the subcommittee to, to the administration and get on the same page and.
That's fine. But given where the bill is, if you guys don't like it, tell me tonight.
I think we should, I think we should take a straw poll opposing the bill tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a straw poll that we oppose this bill and talk with administration about directing lobbyists to, to act on opposing this bill.
Actively oppose. Got it.
Okay. That's the poll. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. Oh, we need to wrap up. Sorry, we're late.
Co-sponsor is Senator Buxton. That would be Frances Gibson. Yeah.
Wait.
Oh, no, 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 no. That, that is Frances Gibson's bill. On Lou's Eskamia's bill, hold on. Let me just take one more second on this all. That's Lou's bill is going to committee, but it's going to Senate committee tomorrow. So she will be presenting the bill. And I'll just tell you, I can tell you right now. Hold on. No, no house sponsor yet. Anything else?
Well, okay, no, let's just burn through them right now. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, things will be moving very fast. So if something comes up, don't sit on it. Let me know and, and we will try and keep in frequent contact.
I have just a few announcements.
We just have the announcements.
One minute. St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 14th at 10:00 a.m. If you're going, show up between nine and 10 at the Salt Lake Fire Station Number One. We can send you more info. Okay. Giant in Our City is on March 26th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. If you're interested, let us know and we'll RSVP. It's honoring Gary Herbert, Governor Herbert. Governor Herbert. Okay. Joint Tau Hall meetings with the mayor. The mayor's, they've identified some dates that work for the mayor because we're trying to kind of make sure that we don't have seven meetings in one month. Sign up for your first and second choices and then we'll see if that works. But we're just trying to get people slotted in on days when it works with the mayor.
I had a question about this. Are we trying to, to host these in conjunction with a community council meeting?
Not necessarily.
Or are we wanting this to be totally separate?
In one case, it was a community council meeting, but not necessarily it's going to be a community council meeting. It would be different.
And how long are we, how long are we taking on these?
Hour or two?
Okay. Okay.
Okay. If, if you can, if you need time to get a date or two, then that's fine, too.
In terms of planning, like if you guys, if anyone wants to hold one in April or May, we should identify that today.
Yeah.
Or soon, really. And so the list there provides specific dates that work for the mayor in April and May so that if you wanted to take advantage of those, then we could move on those. And then later June through the end of the year, we can just, we'll work with her staff on dates.
Let us know if you want April or May.
Is Wednesday, May 11th? So we'll say Wednesday, May 13th.
Oh, thank you. Wednesday, May 13th, not Wednesday, May 11th.
Perfect, yeah.
Yep. Good catch. Let us know. And then we just need a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of purchase exchange or lease of real property.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to enter into close council, closed session for the purposes of. Purchase, exchange, release of property.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been made and seconded. All in favor of moving in? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, we have to roll call this. So Councilmember Wano?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Amy, yes. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be in closed session. Everybody go grab your dinner and meet back here in five minutes' time.